Is he gonna get the Zoomers?
Emily thinks it's spring. Emily thinks it's spring, even though it's forty-three. It's not. I just don't want you to be cold. Wow, look at this. Good morning and welcome to our May Board Meeting of the Board of Trustees of the University of Maine System with great thanks to Ray Rice, President Ray Rice, and his team for hosting us in this great meeting space and arranging this lovely spring weather and for a wonderful dinner last night. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. We are going to call the order. I'd note that there are a number of people who had conflicts today. They are on Zoom and for the purposes of quorum, they count. So, I will ask the clerk to take the role of the people on Zoom.
Trustee Alexander?
Here.
Trustee Mishu?
President.
Trustee Eames?
Here.
Okay, great. Thank you then. We have a quorum and we shall proceed. There are no public comments today, so we will move along. And I think that means an early departure, depending on our conversation. And I would like to make one important change to the future meeting agenda. We, for whatever reason, we had planned to go in November to Fort Kent. And maybe the rain reminded us that in November in Fort Kent, it could be ice. So, with great support from President Hedin and President McConnell, we're gonna switch that and we're going to go to UMF in November and we'll go to Fort Kent in May. So, and Deb has promised there will be no black flies.
But I must say that people in Farmington pray for snow.
I know they do. I know they do. It's still probably a little, little, who knows?
A little safer.
Yeah, we'll make this change and then we'll have a snowstorm and we'll just see. That's why we have the luck of Zoom. We, I just wanted to spend a minute. We sent around, Emily Kane, myself, and trustee Cates went to the Association of Governing Boards meeting. We got the discount. If you send three people, you get a discount. So, we're always very careful about dollars. And it meant that we could spread out and really cover all the sessions. It was a really important conference in an important time. We sent around a summary of that meeting and I don't wanna, I hope people had a chance to look at it, but there were some highlights and I'll ask Emily to join in. And some of them are probably well-known to the trustees, presidents around the table, but I think important to remind the board. First and foremost was the reminder that students aren't like we knew them. They're not like us. And that's true whether we're older trustees or younger trustees, more recently out of college. Only half live on campus nationally. Thirty-eight percent are part-time students. More than half work. For the first time, more are taking online courses than in classes. And the reminder that they kept pounding is that students think of life separately from school. Life, work, school are separate buckets and think of it differently than probably many of us did when school consumed us and became our lives. And a reminder that while many, many students rely on financial aid and Pell and so forth, that the leading cause of debt of students is rent. And a reminder that the sort of social needs of students come are very important, reminding us that frequently connecting students to benefits like SNAP and other food assistance and rental assistance are terribly important. And it was, it was a good reminder. And in the time we're currently in, when those programs are being cut, a reminder that student support becomes really, really serious. It was really clear that the demographic cliff that we've been dealing with in Maine for quite a while is national. And while there are pockets of places doing better, it was clear that a theme everywhere we went was the demographic cliff, reminding us that ninety-four colleges closed last year and that there are four point four excess seats in higher education. I'm not sure how they do that math, but just a reminder that we're all in competition for a smaller and smaller group. And the conversation was much like we've had around this table for a number of years. And I do think, Chancellor, that the University of Maine System is well-advanced in these discussions compared to the nation. But, but the notion of online, getting adult learners, the kinds of things we've talked about here for many years are being talked about everywhere and reminds us of the competitive environment in which we find ourselves. We also heard a striking talk from Robin Wright, a writer, well-known writer, who talked about globalization and that our students aren't ready and that they don't have adequate, they couldn't identify how many countries there are in the world, where those countries are. And she stressed the need for history, languages. She went so far as to say every, every college graduate should take two languages, one of them not a romance language. And it was striking, counterposed with the session I went to, the next, the next one was an online session, which was take students where they are, meet them where they are, give them what they want, get them out soon. And it was an interesting juxtaposition about sort of where, where we are in higher education. There was really significant discussion, obviously, about the current environment and the issues we confront and the budget issues, the uncertainty, the chaos, and the attack on DEI. And I think generally, there was a compelling speech, I think it was the president, Sarah Lawrence, about the term DEI has become so demonized and so misunderstood that we can walk away from the term, but we can't walk away from the value and the function of education to assure equity and engagement. And it was, you know, some really compelling cheerleader kind of speeches that were really, really terrific. And the notion that it's challenging times, we're all in it together and we have to work together and support our team. And I think I'll end with one that might help frame us. We know we want to do a retreat in October and I think this, this may be the best frame. One of, this is, this is--
You're cut off.
I'm cut off. Time, sorry. Which is a reminder that sort of the differential between the role of the board and the role of leadership and the team. And the analogy is, there's a freight ship steaming across the ocean. That is the work of the chancellor and the presidents and the team to move that forward, to get that moving. The board is the helicopter above it that looks ahead, that sees the iceberg, that thinks about the future and thinks about where we're headed. And I thought that was, you know, I think all of us resonated with that and it was a really, really compelling kind of analogy and probably a good way to think about where we're headed for the future. So, Emily, Emily took, Emily showed off and just took really detailed notes.
I like to take notes. That's how I remember things.
They're great.
And I did put a lot of notes that are in the report. What I would say, just, I'll add just briefly to what Trish said, was there was a lot of talk about the value proposition of higher education at large, right? How it is under threat, it is under question, it is being called into sort of, why do we even need this, right? What is this thing? And how we have an opportunity as people who care about it and do understand the value proposition to fight for it, but also to do that in a way that is with others, right? Whether it's across a system, across a region, across a state, that how we can be more powerful as we manage this sticky environment, this very fraught at times environment, if we do it in as loud and as clear and as broad a voice as possible, right? Whether it's across institution types, working across administrations, faculty, alumni organizations, advocacy groups, political entities, that we, we will do more and do better by the things we care about if we can speak as clearly and as collectively as possible. And I think that, that was a real takeaway for me in addition to how much leadership matters, right? That if you have a weak culture inside an institution or inside of a board, even the best leaders are gonna struggle, right? And so how that's really important to focus on the quality of leadership, but also the quality of the environment and culture in which those leaders are being asked to make tough choices. And I think it was a valuable experience. I'm glad that I went. I would encourage others to go in the future. It was really well-run and exceptionally relevant to the work we're doing now and this moment that we're in. Thank you.
Great. It was, and it makes us, I think it's fair to say, we're proud to be part of this system because so much is going on here and it really was--
There were a lot of people who were interested in what we're doing.
Yeah.
Both as an institution and how we were managing the moment. This was the very first week of April. And so, this was hot off a lot of national headlines for our states. And it was, there were a lot of pull-asides about what is going on there in the state of Maine. And I think we were all proud to talk about our good work.
And, and that we're, you know, ahead of the curve in a lot of the things that are becoming national trends. So, so congratulations to all of you. And it was, it was, there is a continuing, there's a group, a leadership group that I've been part of for a year or so now and there. The system leaders, the system board chairs are continuing to meet and have conversations about some of the issues confronting, which is always useful and interesting people. And there are some much bigger systems that are struggling more than we are. So, that's, that gives you some sort of peculiar comfort. But, anyway, so it was, it was a worthwhile adventure and hopefully we, we have shared at least the high points. So, and if Roger were here, who knows? But he'll have a chance.
And happy to talk about it more.
Okay, let's do, let's, speaking of the great team, why don't we do our president's roundtable and ask, well, there's no public comment now, so this, we have time. But let's start with, we're, President Softly.
I thought you'd never ask. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna take a deep breath because I'm really excited. Maine Law-- Sorry. Calmly, she said, Maine Law, for the first time ever, is within the top one hundred law schools in the country by U.S. News and World Report. We hit number eighty-eight this year. We know it's volatile. We are really excited about it in great part because U.S. News and World Report rankings have shifted their focus on the rankings to student success, which is really what we are all about. And with the shift to student success, the wonderful things that are happening at Maine Law have pushed us into the top one hundred. I'm gonna read you a couple other numbers which are really exciting for all of us. Maine Law is the fourteenth in the nation in sending students into public service work, meaningful work. It is forty-sixth in the nation for its respect for the environmental law program, within the top fifty in the country, and seventy-sixth in the nation for our clinical training program, our programs that help students be ready for the world that they are facing. We are incredibly excited about this. And I'm here to say thank you to all of you because it has happened very rapidly over the last three or four years. And it has happened with the support of the board, with the chancellor's constant presence, which I'll talk to you about in a moment. And with the understanding in this system that having a, a law school that is successful, that is helping students graduate out into the world to make a difference is really, really important. So, my, I'm here to say thank you to all of you for everything you did to help us to get to number eighty-eight. A couple other quick things. We have graduation coming up. Our graduation will be Saturday. And I, we have an extraordinary list of people who will be appearing, which I will present to you at our next meeting. So, I won't do that right now. It's a pretty, it's a pretty exciting list of people who will be speaking. And the, the last thing I want to tell you about is that our admissions this year is still running at sixty percent ahead of last year. We're one of six or seven law schools in the entire country that have applications that are that high. We have, we have admitted the class. We are waiting now, as all of us do, for the melt to see if this will happen. But I have to tell you that, and I, and I'll, I'll talk to you about this more in July. One of the fascinating things that has happened at Maine Law that people talk about, and, and they will grab me in the halls to make sure that it's still happening. Chancellor Malloy comes to our first exciting gathering of the newly admitted class every year. And I, you, some of you may remember, there was one year, probably three years ago, when he came. He speaks so well about the need for, for lawyers, for people to be able to advocate those, for those who can't advocate for themselves, that one of the students approached me after that presentation and said, I had, I was crying while he was talking, which I have to say, just annoyed me terribly because I had been trying to do the same thing. But Chancellor Malloy comes as they begin their, their law journey and he's there when they end their law journey. It makes a huge difference. And having someone from the board do the same thing makes a huge difference for all of our students. So, I know that it's time for me to stop talking. I can see that in Trish's eyes. But I just want to say thank you to all of you for everything you've done to get us here.
President Rice, top that.
Well, with the chairs leave here, I'll defer the majority of the comments to our presentation because I want to show a, a video of one of our students. But I, just a couple of quick thanks first for Commissioner Macon for being at our dual graduations and delivering a really warm welcome to the students. That was very much appreciated. And, you know, we talk a lot about numbers. The number I'll admit that I'm most proud about because it shows why we do what we do is this year, we've graduated twelve hundred and seventy-eight students from this university, four hundred right on the nose marched at our graduations. But that's just such a great number. That's double the year before, which was double the year before that. And I really hope to double that again this coming year. But it's just wonderful to see the students coming through our programs and graduating.
Thank you. President McDonald?
Well, thank you. I want to start with a clear victory and our track and field, both men's and women's teams, won the National Atlantic Conference Championships this, this year. Sorry. This, this is a, this is a university without a track, but a championship track team. But we have, we have a lot of good fresh air that helps the lungs. So, we also had, you know, I have to say, we have the most wonderful place to have a graduation with the Western Mountains in the background. It's an outdoor graduation, thanks to trustee Moore. But this year, it rained. So, we had to go to Plan B and we moved indoors. We had three separate graduations, thanks to Dr. Nirav Shah. He gave a commencement speech, did a great, great job. He's, he's a rock star when he comes to campus, but none of the students know him because the students were in high school when, when he was there. But nonetheless, the faculty, the parents, they, they all want selfies with him. And thanks to trustee McMahon, who also spoke at two graduation ceremonies and spoke about ChatGPT. So, you know, go figure. That's great. Also, you know, when, when you think of the graduation, we had ninety-one graduate students graduate, right? So, there's a huge increase that we have seen in our graduate programs, primarily in education, but also in, in counseling. But that's a, a shift that the university has undergone. The, the other shift is the shift that we are making from our traditional face-to-face programs to online. And we are working on CBE programs. We will, we will launch two majors, Public Policy and International and Global Studies on, on CBE. We're also working on six certificates or minors that will be on CBE in Environmental Management, Cannabis Studies, Video Game Studies, Early Child Special Education, Professional Writing, Grad Certificate, and a K-12 Education Program in Artificial Intelligence. Those will all be on CBE. And then our, on our own platform, we already have Special Education, but we're beginning in the fall to have our Community and Public Health Program online. We'll, we'll have a new Masters in Education. We've shifted our Masters in Math Education from low residency to completely online. And then in our Professional Studies Program, where we have a number of certificates or concentrations, we already have Elementary Education, but we'll begin Creative Writing, Data Analysis, Cannabis Studies, Art and Design, Business and Psychology. So, the faculty at UMF are really leaning in to increasing enrollment through CBE and both our online programs.
Fascinating. Thank you. President Pramindhi.
Thank you, Chair. I'm trying to debate whether to start with athletics or with, but in any case, athletics, what I will say is the waitlist process for hockey is working very well. We've already had four hundred people, but I think that number has gone up now significantly even since this list, who are waiting. And we are very hopeful that we'll have a great team next year. If you're watching the recruits, they are looking fantastic, as much as I know about hockey recruits. But anyway, so, so we continue. And baseball is hosting the America East Tournament as we speak. Their first game is Wednesday. So, things are good there. Commencement was a wonderful, joyous occasion, four different commencements in which we were engaged. We had a total of five hundred and forty-two graduate students and one thousand seven hundred and forty-nine undergraduates degrees awarded, honorary degrees to George Denton, our very, very distinguished scientist and-- Honorary degrees to George Denton, our very, very distinguished scientist and scholar, and Dwayne Toma at University of Maine at Machias, a very important webanaki leader and language keeper, and both talks, both, both were well received, of course. We were very fortunate to have trustee Dr. Kane with us at our undergraduate commencements, and we were sorry that trustee Alexander wasn't able to be with us, and we missed you, Barbara. And then at the University of Maine at Machias, we had trustee Kemmler make remarks. And so a wonderful event, several wonderful events, and it worked out just fine to be in the Cross Center, so we were, we were good with that. We'll be back in the Alfon next year. A couple of highlights around the research side and honors for our faculty. Bob Stenick, who helped reshape marine research in Maine during his forty-one career, forty-one year career at the University of Maine, was inducted into the American Academy of Arts and Sciences, and he is the first UMaine faculty member to join that incredibly important group, so we're very proud of Bob. And then also Dean Giovanna Guidaboni was inaugurated into the European Academy of Sciences and Arts, a very big honor for her. And she was, she will, she was inaugurated at a ceremony in Salzburg last spring, so this past spring. So things are good there, and a couple of grants that have come in that we're excited about. Senator Collins announced that the Department of Transportation's ARPA-I unit will be funding an eight million dollar award to ASCC, the University of Maine, to work on the next generation of bridges, more efficient, more, more sturdy, and produced in less time. And then the other wonderful award, so we're very grateful to her office and others who helped to bring that in. And the Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry has awarded UMaine researchers two point two five million to work on PFAS identification issues and to help commercial farmers manage its presence. So lots going on, and we're gearing up for a busy, we are in a busy summer with summer session and summer camps and lots of activity on campus.
Great, thank you. President Kishman.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. We have good news in enrollment at University of Maine Augusta. Our summer credit hours are up eight point six percent compared to last year and ten point two percent above our budgeted credit hours, and we do expect a bit more growth before census on August fifteenth. And our fall credit hours are up thirteen percent compared to last year, and newly admitted student registrations are up forty-five percent to date. And that's, and it's early for UMA. The number of matriculants today represents about a third of our total expected fall entering class, so that's good news. We also have one hundred and sixty-one housing applications. That's the highest number of housing applications we've ever received, so that's good news. We also have a cyber MEIF small, smart manufacturing grant project. The University of Maine Augusta has been awarded a one hundred and ten thousand dollar Maine Economic Improvement Fund Grant to support an innovative cybersecurity research initiative. It's focused on industrial control systems and operational technology. This project, called Smart Manufacturing: Securing Maine's Factories of the Future, will position UMA at the forefront of cybersecurity applied to manufacturing environments. Over the next two years, our faculty and students will collaborate with an advisory board that includes industry leaders and academic partners from across the UMaine system. Together, they will design and build a virtual and physical factory model on UMA's cyber range to simulate and test real-world security scenarios, ranging from power and water systems to supply chain infrastructure. The outcomes of this research will not only enhance cybersecurity resilience across critical sectors, but also produce publishable research and create valuable hands-on experience for our students. This is a significant step forward for UMA's leadership in applied security, education, and workforce development. You may recall that last fall, UMA achieved renewal designation as a Center of Academic Excellence from the National Security Administration through 2029. And finally, I'd like to highlight a graduating student. Our student Heidi Tonner graduated last weekend with her Master's Degree in our new Trauma-Informed Emergency Management Program. She also had completed her Bachelor's at UMA and is a non-traditional student who began her college education around age fif, forty. She was very active at UMA's Bangor Campus and the Student Government Association while earning both of her degrees. She was also a Trio Scholar, Tutor, and this year a Trio Employee. Both of her adult daughters are also students at UMA. She has been accepted into and will start UMaine's doctoral program in higher education this fall. So a non-traditional student who was able to access higher education thanks to UMA's broad access mission, and presumably will eventually hold a doctoral degree, and will have received all of her degrees from University of Maine System institutions.
Great, thank you. Great way to end, thank you. President Dean.
Good morning. So I have a number of things to share with you from the University of Maine at Fort Kent. On April thirtieth, we held our annual Scholars Symposium, and this year's theme was Boundaries and Bridges: The U.S.-Canada Border Over Time. Hmm, a topic that was selected a year ago, and how timely that topic was recently in May for us to discuss and, and share perspectives. There were a number of faculty and student presentations, as well as over fifty student posters. Fabulous day. On May fifth, UMFK participated in the Polar Plunge on Long Lake. What an exciting event that is. I was an observer this year. I plan to be a participant next year. I'm going in that cold lake next year for sure. Very excited about that, already gearing up for it. We had a wonderful commencement ceremony this year. A few of the highlights. We had the first hooding of our MSN, our Master of Science in Nursing graduates, which was spectacular. And this is the first graduate program in the history of UMFK. So a big deal for us to now have graduate programs on our campus and to be able to acknowledge those students and celebrate with them. I'd like to give a special thank you to trustee Martin for attending and also speaking at this year's ceremony. She always does such a fabulous job with that, and we always love having you with us on stage. Our commencement speaker this year was Julia Bowesma. She currently is Maine's Sixth Poet Laureate. She serves in that capacity from 2021 to 2026. And she, as part of her present, her speaking, she had written and shared a poem for the class, the senior class of 2025. So they had their, their own special poem, pretty cool. Also, we had senior class speaker and valedictorian Anna McLaughlin, who spoke to her classmates. She did a fabulous job addressing the group. Anna's back here. This is her last time, last day with us as part of the Board of Trustees, student rep from UMFK. So thank you, Anna. Loved having her serve in that capacity. She did a fabulous job. And then one last piece connected to commencement is that the recessional song this year, the students always select their song that they will recess to, out to, march to, whatever the language is, or dance to. I tend to dance halfway out as well. And the song this year was "Hey Look Ma, I Made It" by Panic at the Disco. I don't know, I've never heard of that group, Panic at the Disco. That sounds like the name of the song, I don't know. We also had our first UMFK Nurse Pinnings Ceremony at Umpie this year, and thank you, President Rice, for attending and also speaking at that ceremony. So that was a really neat tradition now that we will continue every year on the Umpie campus. And finally, last Thursday and Friday, we had twelve directors, managers participate, who participated in leading your team through change. So Dr. Ken Jenkins, UMS Senior Director for Organizational Design and Leadership Development, facilitated the two-day training, and it was spectacular, and it was exactly what we needed on our campus to support and assist our directors and managers, and we had some fabulous outcomes that we will be implementing now this next year from that group. So thank you.
Thank you. President Edmondson.
Greetings from the University of Southern Maine. So I'll start with athletics as well. We do not have an outdoor track, but we do have an indoor track, and we do have fresh air, and so our men's and women's track teams were very successful in the LEC Championships, the Little East Conference this year. The women's team won first place, the men's team came in second place, and our coaching staff was recognized, which, with the Coaching Staff of the Year Award at the LEC, so I was very proud of that. They're a terrific group. And our men's golf team is currently competing in the NCAA tournament. Commencement was just such a highlight, as it is every year. We had sixteen hundred students graduating from the University of Southern Maine. About eleven hundred of them walked last Saturday at the Cross Insurance Arena. We recognized retired Rear Admiral William Lair as a distinguished alumni, and he was our speaker at the event. Trustee Eames was there and offered wonderful remarks, so I want to be sure to thank her for joining us for the event. And we held a separate hooding ceremony for our doctoral students for the first time, which was really quite nice and intimate. A highlight of this particular commencement for me was that we debuted our first alma mater at the University of Southern Maine. So last fall, we put out a request for people to submit lyrics for the alma mater. There was a committee that reviewed them. They sent the lyrics, three sets of lyrics, out to the university for a vote. The successful lyrics were, were written by a sports management professor, Heidi Parker, and it's called "Southern Maine is Coming Home." And our composition professor, Dr. Dan Sonnenberg, wrote the music that, for the lyrics. And at graduation, the song was sung for the first time by a graduating senior who was a voice major named Bella Bonisera. So it was a very special moment. In the weeks since commencement, we had a staff appreciation day. We had one hundred sixteen staff who were recognized, and faculty who were recognized for service that ranged anywhere from five to forty-five years at the University of Southern Maine. We had about two hundred people show up for the event, and we had our strategic plan launched that day. So we have spent the year in town hall meetings and doing surveys and getting input into our strategic plan. And so this was the opportunity for the community to see the, see the plan for the first time, to provide input into the plan. And then we've been working closely with Vice Chancellor St. John in order to think, you know, on the very steps that we need to. So the next thing we'll do is bring that plan to ASA and to the Board of Trustees for review and final approval. But I will tell you, Dr. Jane Kintz, who's a professor and dean at the university, did an amazing job taking all of the notes and putting them together from these different groups to come up with the, the strategic plan. And when she did her presentation at the staff appreciation day, she ended up with a standing ovation, which I have never seen with a strategic plan, so we were very excited about that. So it was, it's a good sign that the community is behind it and will go through the next steps to get it finalized. And then the last thing I will say is that there will be an OSHA map library presence at the Lewiston Auburn Campus. And so if you're in that area and you want to stop by, I'm really excited about the extension there. They do a lot of wonderful outreach to K-12 students. And if you're in Portland and you want to visit the OSHA map library, there's currently an exhibit that was put together with Assistant Professor David Lowry and with the Executive Director of the OSHA Map Library, Libby Bischoff. They were students in our anthropology class, and the exhibit is just fabulous, so please be sure to stop by and see that.
Thank you. And the, it's a permanent part of Lewiston Auburn Campus?
It will be, yes, that's the, the plan, is that they, they have a room, it's near the Franco-American collection, and so we really want to be able to welcome the community there and have them enjoy the assets that we have through the, and the educational opportunities through the OSHA map library.
Great, thank you. Well, it's, I do want to congratulate all of you for completion of another successful academic year, and you need to know that there are more trustees who want to speak than there are slots, so it's, it's, I know every trustee really enjoys the opportunity. It's like a reminder of why we do this work, and it's a terrific, terrific day, all of those commencements, so yay, another, another year down. Let me move on. We do have, as you know, Owen McCarthy has resigned to pursue other opportunities, and we wanted to do a resolution recognizing his service. Let me read the proposed resolution then ask for a motion. Owen McCarthy brought his passion for Maine and its public universities during his service from 2023 to 2025 as a dedicated member of the Board of Trustees for the UMaine system. He was an engaged and informed member of the Standing Committees on Finance, Facilities, and Technology and Audit. Trustee McCarthy advanced the potential of artificial intelligence to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of both Board and UMS operations. Tasked with leading an ad hoc working group on AI and leveraging his extensive experience in technology innovation, he collaborated with co-chair Vice Chancellor Ryan Lowe to assure that the system is at the forefront of educational technology adoption to improve both academic and administrative functions. His deep understanding of emerging technologies and digital transformation enabled the Board to make forward-thinking decisions that will benefit our students and better steward public dollars during a period of unprecedented change in higher education. Throughout his tenure, trustee McCarthy brought his business and entrepreneurial insights to help address how UMS could find efficiencies in operations and position itself to meet the workforce and research needs of the future. Trustee McCarthy listened carefully, respected all sides of a discussion, and raised important issues that strengthened Board deliberations. His collegiality, energy, and devotion to Maine's public universities were contagious, and his ideas for strategic change boundless as he thoughtfully advanced ideas to support educational excellence and innovation to better UMS and Maine. Trustee McCarthy represented UMS effectively at the Association of Governing Boards Annual Conference. There, his outreach to peers across the country led to important technology partnerships and valuable knowledge exchange that informed the Board's technology strategy and digital initiatives. The Board of Trustees thanks Owen McCarthy for his considerable contributions to the Board and to Maine's public universities. Could I have a motion? Moved by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Martin. All those in favor? All those opposed? And we will take the roll.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Eames?
Yeah.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Great, motion carries, thank you. Okay, we will now, and, and we will send this forthwith to Owen. We'll now move to tab two and ask trustee Alexander to walk us through the Red Line Board Policies.
Thank you very much, and I want to express my deepest apologies for being unable to attend the University of Maine graduation and this meeting. I'm at the tail end of a couple weeks of a nasty pneumonia virus, or bacteria probably, and definitely on the upswing here, but not ready for two days of interaction with my dearest friends at the Board of Trustees. I would miss my afternoon nap. Anyway, turning to the agenda, your subcommittee that has been working on revising our board policies bring three revisions to you. This is the initial presentation. It allows you opportunity to ask questions and provide comment, and we will consider these for final adoption at the July meeting. The first one is a policy, a three oh one mission policy. The subgroup felt that we should add the strategic plan mission statement of the University of Maine system that we worked so hard to develop, and so the addition you see here is to merely add that consensus statement to our description of the missions' policies. The second item is, excuse me, I misspoke. The first one is to not the addition of the strategic plan. The first one is three oh one, and that is that we made the statement that strategic plan mission statements for the individual universities and law school will not appear in the written policy statements of the Board. That we will adopt, if this is correct, passing through your approval, we will adopt the policy that such statements and missions of the individual universities and the law school should occur at the direction of the university in question and meet certain procedural requirements and comply with our strategic plan. We will not need to approve the individual mission statements. We can ask for them to be revised at our own initiative should we choose to do so. The second item is three oh one point one, which is the addition of the strategic plan mission statement for the system to our mission statement for the system in our policy document. That is just a word-by-word copying of our strategic plan mission statement. The third item is three oh two, and particularly with the assistance of Jeffrey St. John, the Academic and Student Affairs Vice Chancellor, we have now a commitment to a common academic calendar for all of the obvious benefits that are stated in this policy statement. That calendar will be developed by the Academic and Affairs Vice Chancellor. So let me, that's a real benefit and improvement. Let me ask if there are any questions or issues that you wish to have our policy groups consider. to have our policy groups consider in the further consideration and proposed adoption of these items that will come to you in the July board meeting.
For action in July. Any any questions?
Yes.
Vice Chancellor St. John?
Can I offer one friendly word of clarification on the calendar? So the trustees know, and certainly faculty in the room know, roughly 10 years or so ago, the board regularized the start and end dates for the spring and fall semesters, the spring and fall terms. In doing the work of looking at the academic calendar for the summer term, my team has been trailing behind the work of the policy subcommittee in close communication with the registrars across all of our universities. We're working on an update to the Administrative Practice Letter, the APL, that would identify the earliest possible start date for summer term, the latest possible end date for summer term, and the same for winter term for each of our universities, without doing anything to change the individual sessions within those terms. So no university will be asked in any way to change the arrangement and deployment of their summer session or their winter session. We're just looking in keeping with with trustee Alexander's guidance and trustee Flood and trustee Eames, who are part of this subcommittee, to regularize the start and end dates. The actual operations of the terms within summer and winter will not be altered by these changes.
Thank you.
Could I ask the Vice Chancellor if the final version of the Administrative Practice Letter will be ready for approval in July?
So we've been typically following a couple of months behind. And given where we are, trustee Alexander, with faculty going off contract in a couple of weeks, it's more likely we would bring that forward in an early fall ASA for your consideration. We want to put it in front of the Faculty Governance Council in September, so faculty have a chance to take a look at the APL before we bring it to you.
Okay, well, we'll talk about that. But it seems to me that it would probably not be appropriate to adopt a reference to a APL that's not yet finalized. So let's figure out the timetable for doing all that. Thank you.
Certainly.
Great. Okay. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Chair Alexander. Very, we'll look forward to July. Let me move to tab three, confirmation of our student representative. And first, take a minute. We are we are appointing a new student rep from U of Fort Kent, but I want to just take a minute to thank Anna McLaughlin for her service and wish her all the best. You will be missed, and thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. Are we ready? Is the mic working? Hello? I am pleased to submit Rebecca Sanchez as UMFK's Board of Trustees Student Representative. Rebecca has prepared a statement, and I would like to read it on her behalf. Hello, my name is Rebecca Sanchez. I'm a first generation Mexican-American college student at the University of Maine at Fort Kent. I am committed to academic excellence, community involvement, and advocating for my peers. I currently serve as the nursing representative on the Student Senate and was recently elected to my peer by my peers to serve as the next president of the Student Nurses Organization. I have also been accepted into Northern Maine Medical Center's Clinical Innovation Program this fall semester, where I will further develop my clinical skills and contribute to healthcare innovation. I am passionate about promoting safe, supportive healthcare environments and excited to continue building my experience as a future nurse. It is an honor to represent the students of UMFK, and I look forward to continuing to serve and give back to the university community that has supported my journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca, well, let me let me just first take a motion. Do I have a motion? Trustee, trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor? And we will...
Trustee Eames?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Great. And Rebecca, could you stand up and just... Thank you. Oh, could you be from Fort Kent?
Go Bengals!
Glad to have you. Thank you. The next item is election of board offices. Trustee McMahon.
Thank you, Chair Riley. The nominating committee, which was trustee Flood, trustee McCarthy, and myself, met and solicited nominations from the board for chair and vice chair. We received self-nominations from Chair Riley and Vice Chair Ames. Two trustees independently nominated Chair Riley, and three trustees independently nominated Chair Ames for, sorry, Vice Chair Ames. The nominating committee recommends that Chair Riley continue for another 12-month term, and that Vice Chair Ames continue for another 12-month term. The nominating committee noted that according to the bylaws, the chair can be elected for only four consecutive terms, so this will be the last term as chair for Chair Riley. Equally, the bylaws require that both the chair and vice chair be residents of the state of Maine. This requirement is fulfilled by both. Therefore, I would move the election of Trish Riley as chair and Lisa Ames as vice chair.
There's a second by somebody. Who was that? Emily? The great second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Trustee Eames?
I vote on myself. Okay. If I can, I'll say yes.
Okay. Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you all for the support in another year. Onward. And let's move now to the chancellor's report.
Yes, thank you. I just have to comment about the reports of the presidents, which were really quite exciting and moving and representative of the tremendous success that we've enjoyed over the last few years as we turned our system around, so much so that although we several of our presidents talked about how many degrees were awarded at their universities, reality is that we awarded greater than 6,500 degrees of one type or another at these graduations, which I think is really quite remarkable. It speaks to other undertakings that that we have collectively, presidents and vice chancellors and myself, taken to reform our admissions policies, to make sure that we're giving answers to students as rapidly as possible so that they might join us. And it is also representative of our significant improvement on retention. And those two things lead not just to a good population joining us in any given August or any given January, but allows us to award more degrees, which is the business that we are in. And so I want to thank each of the presidents, the vice chancellors, and the trustees for supporting the efforts that we have made along these lines, and and quite frankly, hope that you all celebrate that reality of the progress that these presidents are making. So I just wanted to say that, and I was moved by a number of the statements that that were made. I would also say that we are in the midst of an experience which I wouldn't wish on anyone, and that's the upheaval of Washington and policies and budget making. And I can assure you that it's all hands on deck. I will point to the University of Maine, which is playing a very significant role in our controlling, understanding, and in some cases, turning decisions around. Joan and her support staff at her university are doing a great job, not just for their university, but for all of our universities. And I want the public to know how significant that work is. And Joan and I have a close working relationship with respect to this issue as well. And I appreciate her counsel, and I hope that she appreciates from time to time mine. But I do want the public to understand that a tremendous amount of time is being spent in receiving notices from the federal government, from contesting those notices when they were incorrect, and bringing ourselves into compliance where necessary. So that's an important step that we are are taking, and I suspect will continue to eat up a tremendous amount of our time over the summer. So Joan, you better get your vacation in early. A few other things that I would like to point out is that we are making substantial progress in a number of areas. We talked about people applying for housing at greater numbers than than we've seen before at our universities. Our infrastructure, which has lagged for the better part of 50 years, infrastructure investment, which has lagged for more than 50 years. I can't say we're catching up, but we're getting better at making investments and turning around those buildings and facilities that can be turned around, and more and more replacing those facilities when it is not as wise to invest in the current facilities, but to create new ones. And that too should be understood and appreciated by the public. Our campuses look better today than they did when I first arrived here just six years ago. And I think we should be very proud of and celebrate those accomplishments. And again, the president's taking the lead on their own campuses in that regard and greatly appreciated. I would also say that the work of the vice chancellors, which is demonstrated on a daily basis, is truly extraordinary. I'm very proud to be working with those individuals as well. We are moving programs to adoption, and we are making change in in company with each of our universities and their faculties at a rate not seen in a very long time, if ever, in our system. And I want to celebrate those successes as as well. And then I would also point out that on tab five and tab six, we will ask for approval of our review of two of our presidents, and in the hopes that we might enter into new contracts with those individuals as well. Again, it's great to be with all of you trustees. I appreciate how hard you work in regards to making the changes that that's just a few of which I have referenced in this statement today. Let's keep it up.
Thank you, Chancellor. Questions to the chancellor before we move to the action Seeing none. We did speak, the chancellor did brief us, obviously, a personnel matter in executive session, and I am happy to report the extraordinary support of the board for the presidents whose contracts are being renewed, we hope, today. And let me read the proposed resolutions. That the Board of Trustees authorizes Chancellor Mallory to conclude negotiations and extend the contract for president of the University of Southern Maine through June 30, 2028. Do I have a motion?
No.
Trustee Husey, seconded by trustee Kane. And again, this is an important issue. The team matters, as we've seen by the by the efforts the chancellor identified. So all those in favor? All those opposed?
Trustee Eames?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you for continuing to serve the University of Southern Maine. And to all of us. And one more important one, that the Board of Trustees authorizes Chancellor Mallory to conclude negotiations and extend the contract for the president of the University of Maine at Presque Isle through June 30, 2028. Moved by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Martin. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Trustee Eames?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Again, thank you, President Rice, for your continued service to the University of Maine at Presque Isle.
Thank you for that action. I would now turn the microphone over to Vice Chancellor Dorsey for some brief updates and introductions. Please take it away.
Thank you. Good morning. I have two very quick updates, a reminder, and then I will turn it over to President Rice. Two very quick updates on some of the chancellor's priority initiatives. First, the marketing update. As you recall, we are working with Blaze Partners on some system-wide marketing efforts. Their work kicked off on April 1st, primarily working on developing a brand identity for the system and how we would work with the universities and their marketing efforts for their campuses. So they've started with stakeholder engagement, doing some desk research, what we're already doing, the perception of the system, our public relations work, working with the Maine Business, the Graduate Business School, and some work that they recently did on the perception of the system, and also our current positioning, our market position. The majority of the work to date that started, again, just April 1st, has been on our website, how we will begin to look at the functionality of the website and what it is that that we need to do with the website, but also how we make it more user-friendly, and be sure that it is something that as people visit the website, they can get information, but will also be moved quickly to the universities that they really are there to find. They're not usually there trying to find information out about the system. They're there to find out about one of our universities and kind of stumble upon the system website in that search. So great work being done by Blaze Partners, and just wanted to make sure that we gave you the update that the work did start April 1st and is moving along really well. There will be a formal update given to you as as indicated in the work plan, but just wanted you to know that the work has begun. Also, really great news, wanted to let you know that, again, as another priority initiative, funds were put aside for the small campuses for fundraising, to build fundraising capacity at our smaller campuses. After the March board meeting, we received proposals from all of this, from all but one of the small campuses. We were able to review and award each one of those proposals. The funds are on the way to the campuses now so that they can kick off the work to help build infrastructure around fundraising at the small campuses. The one that we have not yet received, we are working with them, and they will submit a proposal. The timing, we just haven't had a chance to receive and work with them yet. So very excited to receive proposals from UMF, UMP, UMA, UMM, UMFK, and we will be working with Maine Law in the very near future. So excited to receive proposals and fund five of those to date. So as a reminder, they were all able to submit proposals for up to $125,000, and they were asked to also, in their proposal, to submit an expected 20% university match. And I was really pleased to see the exciting things that they provided, that they'll be doing to increase the capacity for campus fundraising. So we again will have more formal reports on all of those in future, future board meetings. The other is not really an update, but more of a reminder. You will be hearing in a little bit from our chief information officer, Robert Placido. He's going to give us an update on the unified catalog. A piece of that conversation has always been about outside of the technology, but how will how will the money flow? When a student signs up for a course, how will the tuition dollars flow from university to university? What will happen to the enrollments with that student? So I just wanted to assure you that there is a plan in place. There have been conversations in place to make sure that all of those frameworks are there. So in 2022, the chancellor pulled a group together to make sure that that was discussed. At the time, Dr. Placido was the Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs. He led that work, created a framework that was then vetted with the CBOs, our Chief Business Officers, and the presidents. An MOU was developed and signed, agreed upon, that worked on what we call cross-linked courses, where it is a course that is perhaps shared between programs, universities, campuses. And it talked then about how tuition revenue would be shared and the enrollments would be allocated between campuses. That really is the main framework by which we then looked at a unified catalog situation. As you know, students have always been able to take courses across campuses. It just now is easier to do. And the work that Vice Chancellor St. John did around completing our study away form has also assisted in this work. So a student now can much more easily sort of one-stop So a student now can much more easily sort of one-stop shopping, is able to sign a form and it will allow behind the scenes, all of the work to be done, to move funds, work with financial aid, work with the registrar, work with the transcripts, all the things they need to do to be able to pay for courses at another campus, have that academic record be, you know, moved from one transcript to another. All of the pieces happen, sort of, I can't remember the word that he uses, automatically, I think is the word that Robert likes to use, yes. Behind the scenes. And it used to be something that the student had to do themselves. Now it's done by our staff or our team pretty seamlessly. I'm sure that there will be some kinks to work out as we roll this out. But just a reminder that these conversations have taken place, the frameworks are in place. We will continue to work on it as we roll out the Unified Catalog, but there are metrics there. So you will hear more about Unified Catalog. I didn't want to come back up before Robert's piece, so I sort of pushed it in the middle of this update. So. And then finally, one last thing before I sit down. I am very excited to turn the podium over to President Rice. He has an update to give and also some guests that I'm sure he will introduce himself. But in 2017, when I was still a faculty member here at UMPI, Ray sort of wandered into my office and sat down in front of my desk and said, have you ever heard of CBE? And I had not. So we chatted, came up with this very ambitious goal of starting a new academic program. He gave me four months to roll out an entire program with the goal at the time of having perhaps, and we thought it was a pretty lofty goal, 25 students enroll in that first semester. So we went to work, very nervous, didn't think I was going to be able to hit 25. There was a board meeting a few weeks later where Ray announced that this is something we were going to do, and he announced to the board that the goal was 50 students in the first semester. And I won't repeat the conversation that we had on the ride home after that, but I was incredibly nervous, thought this is never going to work, we're never going to have 50 people, we can't do it in four months. So off we go. That fall, less than four months later, we kicked off our first CBE program with 101 students enrolled. And actually, there were more than 500 inquiries. I know that there were more than 500 inquiries because we were really not set up with any true enrollment people or admissions people. The only thing that was in the press release that talked about it was my office phone number. So all 500 inquiries came into my office phone number and me and my part-time work study had to reply to all 500 phone calls about the then CBE program. So I'm very familiar with the kickoff of the program, but I'm very proud of the CBE program and how it has developed since April of 2017. And I am pleased that Ray and guests are here to give you an update of how it has developed since then.
Thank you, Carolyn. And I do remember it as we talked about 50 the entire time. I just. But thank you for the introduction and and I have some brief presentations, one from my provost and vice president, Dr. Alana Margeson, who will give you a snapshot of current state of where we're at in regards to enrollments and programs and planned programs. Huge shout out, you heard from President McDonald, the work that is now being done as our university is working together to bring Farmington's programs online into competency modality, starting this fall, Fall 1, which Joe's just about as ambitious as I was. He said, yeah, we're going to start Fall 1. And I was like, you mean Fall 2, right? Or Spring 1? But nope. So we're starting Fall 1, and that's just amazing work from his team in that regard. And also Fort Kent and President Haddin and the RN D B S N, which is also slated to start Fall 1, which is just such a natural, great program to have in a competency format, the RN D B S N. So and other conversations that that are ongoing. So you'll hear just a very quick snapshot from my provost about that. I'll introduce Sharla Long to give you kind of 50,000-foot view and perspective on what the opportunities are in competency education, what we're well-suited to do here in the state of Maine and far beyond. But before we do that, and I'm just making sure our techie gurus over here are all set with the video. At our graduation, we had two graduation speakers. We had one in the morning, and so my apologies for Commissioner Macon, who's going to get a repeat of one of these. But the one in the morning was one of our students from the great community of Howland that was with us for five years, completing two degrees, great athlete, really knew the campus in and out, in a dorm student, right, for much of that time, and just a wonderful person on campus their entire career. The second student, Ashley Ramsey, comes from Sacramento, California, and Saturday morning was the first time this student had ever stepped foot on our campus. So this was a student that flew in from California, managed to get through Newark, and then land safely and, you know, be present with us and was our afternoon speaker. So it was quite the experience. And people ask me, you know, why, how did you get into competency education? And I mumble stuff about Cben and Sharla Long and stuff like that, my old boss, President Linda Schott. But then, you know, there's personal reasons and I could talk about, you know, my my parents couldn't complete college degrees, three out of my, three out of four of my grandparents couldn't complete college degrees. We can talk about the work that we're committed to do with what we used to call as adult learners and now are, you know, the largest sector of the population that goes to college, workforce development, all the, all of the work that faculty have to dedicate to themselves to really work within a modality that is antithetical to the way most of us learned higher education would work, which was we deliver a product and students have to meet our terms, right, as students within programs. And how you kind of turn that on its head is the simplest way to put it. But the real reason we do this, and multiple people on my campus remarked about this after the students' presentation, was what you'll hear from Ashley Ramsey, who just gave a remarkable short address. They were charged with three minutes, I think just a little over three minutes because she's so good at the presentation. But I just thought we'd spend a couple minutes with Ashley here.
Good afternoon, university faculty, staff, family, friends, and most importantly, my fellow graduates. We made it! And let's just take a moment to sit with that, to feel it, to let it sink in, because this, this was not handed to us. We worked for this. We pushed through the exhaustion, the doubt, the juggling acts of life, schoolwork, and responsibilities. We sacrificed sleep, missed moments, and navigated challenges that no syllabus, no shame, could have prepared us for. But we did it anyway. We showed up. And today, we stand here, not just as graduates, but as proof. Proof that when you refuse to quit, when you refuse to settle, when you decide that you are worthy of more, you create more. All of our journeys were different. Some of us were sitting in classrooms every day. Others were logging in from kitchen tables, bedrooms, break rooms, and car rides between picking up the kids or headed to work. Some of us studied before sunrise, others deep into the night. But let me tell you something, our education wasn't any less real, if anything, it was more real. Because it required discipline. It required self-motivation. It required us to be intentional. And we rose to the occasion, to our professors, our advisors, and the university staff. Thank you. You didn't just teach us, you challenged us. You saw potential and held us to it. To our families, our friends, our support system, thank you. Thank you for seeing the vision, for holding us up and reminding us that we were built for this, even when we weren't sure ourselves. And to my fellow graduates, this right here, this is not a beginning, it's not an end. Make no mistake, this degree is not just a piece of paper. It is a symbol of every late night, every early morning, every sacrifice, and every victory, big or small, that led us to this day. It is a reminder that we are not just survivors of this journey, but we are creators of our own success. This is not a glass ceiling. It is a launching pad. Because people will try to put limits on us. They will question if we belong, if we are capable, if we deserve to take up space in rooms that they never designed for us. But let me tell you something, because we have already arrived. So let us take up space boldly, unapologetically, and without hesitation. Because success isn't just about times or paychecks, success is about impact. It's about what we do with what we've been given. It's about reaching back, breaking cycles and building bridges and making sure that the next generation sees us, class of 2025, and says, because they did it, I can. Maryam Williamson said it best, our deepest fear is not that we are inadequate, our deepest fear is that we are powerful, beyond measure. It is our light, not our darkness, that most frightens us. So let us not dim our light. Let us not shrink ourselves to make others feel comfortable. Let us step into our brilliance, own our power, use our voices, and carry this success, not just for ourselves, but for our families, for our communities, and for everyone that still needs to see that it is possible. Because the best, oh, the best is yet to come. So I say, congratulations, class of 2025, we have made it. Thank you.
Kelly, I kind of hope you got to speak before her. I would want to follow. Oh, I'm sorry, Pender, Pender, that's right.
Yellow Green was like, boy, I was like glad I gave my commencement announcement before.
That was amazing. And you know what was also amazing about that is to see how proud you were in the background, that big smile.
I had read it, but hearing her deliver it, seeing her deliver it was, and all the, and the students first all leapt to their feet and then the whole audience did. So that was a nice, it was a really great moment. So but again, I just, I, nothing underscores the work of of any academic program, any university, you know, any approach to higher education, all the hard work we do, all of the things we believe in, I think really comes to fruition with a student like Ashley, who literally did not, and I met her parents afterwards. She gave her mom a heads up, but her dad didn't know. I'm like, he must have just been anyways. And he was like, no, I didn't know she was going to do that. So it was, you know, that's just amazing moment to see the empowerment that students have through an opportunity that they would not have had through any other, any other means, which is, at the end of the day, why we all, what we do, do what we do here, I think.
Just hey. Kelly and I are over here commenting on you in the video, watching her give that speech beaming, and that was awesome. All the people on the station's face, especially yours, just beaming with pride, and that is what that's all about, so.
I was actually beaming with, how am I going to end this after?
Where do we go from here? Anyway, it was really cool.
Right. And how do I vote for her for office? And so. But so with that, let me, that would diss away to kind of encapsulate, I think, the success from that first moment that Carolyn so well, you know, which was scratched on a napkin, coming back from a Cben conference, talking to Carolyn at the table in her office and to that moment. So I think that just really shows that life cycle of how important a program like this is. With that, let me ask Provost Margeson to give you a few moments of updates and then I'll introduce Sharla.
Thank you and good morning. So I'll be sharing a little bit about Yourpace and a snapshot of both where we are and where we're headed, as well as in other modalities. I'll start by sharing that our current Summer 1 enrollment is 1331. That is for the first eight-week session of Summer in Yourpace. We are seeing summer growth of enrollment, really it's mirroring what we normally see in a spring semester. So as an example, in Spring 2 that we just finished, we had Yourpace enrollment of 1,500. And our Summer Session 2 is right now just shy of 900. So if we kind of look at that forward, we can see with about five weeks left of enrollment that we will likely meet that or even exceed it. Our current Summer Session 1 enrollment, again, is 1338 as of this morning. And with that, we're also seeing some great numbers in our graduate program, our Master of Arts in Organizational Leadership. We had in Spring about 217 students active across Summer or Spring 1 and Spring 2, and already we have 174. So again, that's with several weeks of enrollment potential for Summer 2. Our greatest enrollments continue to be in Yourpace in our Business and Accounting Programs, as well as our Bachelor of Liberal Studies and Psychology Programs. And we're adding two-year degree options as well in Yourpace with an Associate in Early Childhood Education and AA in Human Services that we're working on collaboratively with our partners at UMFK. We have an Intend to Plan submitted for an Associate in Business as well to create that ladder model to give students options. In the spring, we added a Healthcare Administration undergraduate program in Yourpace. And with that success and with the innovation and spirit of colleagues both here at Humane Presque Isle and Humane Fort Kent, we have an Intend to Plan that has moved forward for a Masters of Science in Healthcare Administration that we hope to launch in Spring of 2026. With the growth of the MAOL program in particular, we are excited to offer the first three of 11 concentrations in our Masters of Science and Business Program in Yourpace beginning this fall, with Communication, Entrepreneurship, and Human Resources Management as those first three concentrations. Side note, we just added the 11th concentration, and that's AI Policy and Strategy. We really want to make sure that we're preparing our graduates for the workforce. We also added an Artificial Intelligence concentration to our undergraduate business administration program as well. And we have, moving forward, a program proposal for a Master of Arts in American Studies that will be offered in Yourpace. I'd also like to share a couple of our efforts for program growth in other modalities than CBE, although I will say, to echo what President Rice mentioned, we're really excited and very pleased with the collaborations with our colleagues at University of Maine at Fort Kent and Farmington as we develop more and hope to continue to move forward with academic development in Yourpace. In other modalities, we continue to work with the University of Maine at Augusta to offer the Masters of Laboratory Science in an online asynchronous format, beginning in Spring. And also, we recently had approved a four-year option for Early Childhood Education, that program proposal. So this will allow for a two-year degree with our colleagues at the Northern Maine Community College just across town. These students can now have a seamless, true two-plus-two pathway to come here and study a four-year degree, really focusing on that birth-to-grade-three span. Thank you.
Okay, so as I said, that's kind of a snapshot of what we're looking at, looking forward, both with our own institution and with our sister institutions in the system. So with that, let me ask Sharla to join us here at the podium, again, founding president of the Competency-Based Education Network, and that's a national consortium of hundreds of colleges, universities, and statewide systems working to design and scale high-quality, flexible, equitable learning pathways. And she's been listed as one of, by the Chronicle, one of our top 10 most influential people in higher education. So really glad to hear, have Sharla here with us this morning and give us a sense of where we're headed.
Thank you so much, Ray. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you today again. And if you'll hit the slides, we'll do this very quickly. It is a, these, listening to your numbers, so, something to be so very proud of, and I would say institutions that have launched at similar times are seeing similar growth. I don't know about you, I come from Nashville, Tennessee, but there aren't many hours that I can go with a TV on without hearing an ad. without hearing an ad about a competency-based program. They don't necessarily call it competency-based, but you're seeing commercials a lot from our for-profit institutions like a Capella, who talk about their Flex Path or some of our big players like a Southern New Hampshire or Western Governors University with their ads, all using that flexibility. How do we reach learners with a new way and a new approach? And so as you think about the University of Maryland Global Campus, which is somewhat near you, at least in this region of the country, the space is getting more and more players engaging. And so we're excited about that growth. They are seeing growth and that is causing them to branch out into new programs. Share briefly just some of those national highlights, if you want to hit it, whoever is doing slide advancement. CBE, a concept 10 years ago that Ray and Caroline worked on on the back of a napkin, has really gone mainstream, often not using CBE as the language, but using other words, other signals. Right now, what we see, I love you. Right now, what we see is a lot of language around Skills First, the Skills Movement, Skills Society. Governors that are tossing out degree requirements and saying, we will no longer hire for degree, but we will hire for skills. What does that mean to us as faculty? I myself have been a tenured faculty and spent 25 years or so at public institutions. And I would say this, this change and this preference towards skill, what does that mean? And how do I help my learners translate what they have into skills language? So whether it's NPR, I just did a series with NPR that's about to air on the rise of competency-based education. A lot of these mainstream pieces talking about the college degree versus skills. And I don't think it's a versus at all. It's about helping our college degrees begin to talk about skill language inside that degree offering. When we look, 51% of our Fortune 500 companies are not using degrees as the proxy for what a candidate knows and can do there. Instead, using skills, that's half. 81% of companies globally are now using skills as the determining factor for whether a person gets a job or not. Last night at my dinner table, we were talking about a graduate in the Criminal Justice Program who needed it, a bachelor's degree, just so they could unlock a promotion level. That's going away. And what we're seeing is, no, I need this set of skills and competencies, which I will get in a degree, but the degree itself will not be the thing that opens it. I've got to have the package of those knowledge, skills, abilities and behaviors as well. And so as a result, we see about 1 in 10 institutions nationally that are offering CBE programs. We went from seven members in 2017 to 5,000-plus members in our organization today internationally. Man, is education being beat up in the media, right? This is a recent cartoon that came out that, that really was just to be mean to public education. There's a lot of great stuff that happens in public education. But unfortunately, both at the K-12 level and the higher ed, we often take a beating for that in part because we have to do a better job of communicating what we are giving learners as an outcome in that education. You may have seen that the Carnegie Foundation has been working to undo the credit hour system that they put into place in the 1920s. And they are in the process of launching an agenda that they hope within 10 years that we replace the credit hour system with a competency and outcomes-driven system from K-12 all the way through higher education. Their agenda, this is a slide that they gave me permission to use today, but their agenda is about to be released that talks about how can we make that switch to more outcomes-based learning environment? Still honoring the educational system, but having us signal more externally what it is a student knows and can do. So our mission as an organization is to try to help catalyze that. How do we help equip institutions with the skills they need to be able to build this kind of network? The, the fear, I would say, is that we don't want to negate quality in the process. This isn't about a checklist approach to education. This is a high-quality approach that focuses on outcomes. And really in 2015 and 2016, we saw a lot of bad actors beginning to say, oh, we'll just offer CBE. Oh, we'll just offer CBE. But we didn't see the quality behind their offerings. And so a group of 30 institutions came together. You all were one of those institutions at the table that helped to create a quality framework to say, we want to govern what quality looks like. We didn't feel like, to be honest, our accrediting bodies were quite attuned yet to CBE. And so we wanted to say, here is how you do this with quality so we could hold people to good outcomes. And so there is a quality framework. There's a review process. There's a way in which schools can make sure we're not just slapping a label on something and saying it's outcomes or competency-based, but we're really ensuring high-quality results like you just saw in Ashley's video, right? And so this quality framework really guides the work that we do. In Presqueille, their CBE program is offered online. You may be at an institution where an online modality isn't what your learners need. And so I would say you can do CBE on ground. You can do CBE online. You can do CBE hybrid. The delivery mechanism doesn't matter. What matters is that you've got solid set of competencies. You've got a coherent design. You have faculty that are deeply engaged in that work that are helping those learners develop those skill sets that you're assessing using performance-based assessment, that you're transparent in the results, right? You stick with the quality framework. Your delivery mechanism can be whatever it needs to be. Like Maine, we see other states having coherent state strategies. In Kentucky, the upper right corner here, in Kentucky, the post-secondary and the secondary system work together to create a graduate profile. What is it that we want our learners to graduate from high school with? From an associate's and a four-year degree? What are those essential skills? Like quantitative reasoning, like cultural awareness? What are those skills we want people to graduate with? And they are defining what that performance looks like at high school, at the associate's level, at the four years, and then embedding that into their curriculum. So some really interesting work happening in the state of Kentucky, where they're all coming together, but the secondary and the post-secondary space to think about that. And so I would just say, we covered a number of these examples yesterday from Washington's Grow Your Own Model, where they're growing those early childhood teachers. So it's great to hear of your associate's program as well in that area. The linkage between the community college to that four-year institution and making that as seamless as possible. When we use those competencies, we have a greater likelihood of making that happen. And then I can't underscore the University of Kansas, the University of Nebraska. There are other R1 institutions that are also beginning to make those moves into the space. University of Wisconsin has done that as well. But the R1s that are moving into the space will help to continue to give, unfortunately, an appearance, I guess, that it's of quality because an R1 engages in it. But it does help lift and get more institutions engaged. And so we are thankful to Kansas and Wisconsin and Nebraska and other states that are, that are taking the moves to move towards this kind of approach. So I encourage you, as you, as a Board of Trustees, as university presidents, think about competency-based approaches, the work that Ray and the team has done here at Presqueille. What does it look like in Maine? How can you work together? How can you work with your, your K-12 system as well for those seamless integration? What does a dual-credit approach look like that's based on competencies? How are new ways of thinking about transfer? How can we build apprenticeship pathways? How can we help do work embedded learning? I think competencies give you that kind of flexibility. So appreciate the opportunity to just share a little bit about how your work fits nationally and to commend Ray and the team here for sharing so openly with the national and international landscape as well. Do I turn that back to you, Ray?
You know, at, at the chair's discretion, any time for questions or engagement with either my provost or Sharla Long?
Absolutely. Any questions?
A couple of questions, Ray. Thank you very much for this incredibly informative for myself. So my hunch would be the speed to market matters here from a positioning perspective and a branding perspective. If it's going to take off in the way that sort of this data suggests, it seems like we'd want to be out in front of this as widely as possible. So the first question is, what do you all need to sort of accelerate getting CBE across the system to market? Sort of beyond just here in Presqueille? And then the second question is, do we have any projections on how this may increase graduate enrollment? Essentially as a feeder program for other grad, full-time graduate degree programs in the system? And is there an opportunity to develop specific tracks, i.e. a pre-law track, that then people could be easily funneled into Maine law? So I guess some of this is probably further out, but curious how we're thinking about this from a bigger perspective.
Yeah, those are outstanding questions. I'll let both Sharla and Alana respond to a couple of them. One that's, I think, really key for me is automation mechanizing, using AI in a way that allows us to leverage resources that we haven't had previously. So, and all that gets back to our systems that we utilize. You know, frankly, our systems were the biggest barrier for, for us to create CBE. That's a fact that Carolyn knows too well. We had to outsource to a different learning platform to begin with. We had to outsource most of our technology and platforms, as well as our marketing, as well as a lot of our profits. So one, you know, we're past that. And my thanks especially to Robert and Ryan only knows so well how important this is. But continued engagement from Robert, who's actively working on these issues right now for us, both from the first point of contact all the way through how we deliver. That's a huge issue for us for scalability, to get to the scale that other institutions are already at and continuing to increase as much as possible. So yes, that's, that's important. And I would just say, time to market is, is, it's always been critical for me. As Carolyn testified, four months, I can't believe I said four months. That was kind of cruel. That was kind of cruel. But yeah, yes, but. But it's important to all of us. As my fellow presidents know, time to market is incredibly important. So.
But time to market without sacrificing quality, right? So I would just go back and say, we want to move quickly, but you don't want to move quickly if what, what happens is you end up sacrificing the quality of the education or the outcomes as a result. So would I ever recommend four months? No, that's pretty, that's pretty fast, right? But you can do it as long as you're really anchored to what are the elements of quality? Do we have the kinds of engagement we, we need to have? Are the curricular materials well-designed, yada, yada? So.
Can I just, can I add quickly though that I did, Ray and I just recently discussed him sort of getting together with his team and giving us a list of sort of priority order. This is exactly what we need in all areas to, to, to continue to scale. So we did just have that conversation in the last week or so. Yeah. So just so you know.
Okay, yeah, that was my follow-up question. Is it talent, technology, capital that sort of we need to supercharge, supercharge this with?
Can I ask a devil's advocate sort of question? Because we are clearly intrigued by this and supportive. But as I think about the world and its globalization and the critical need for educated people, people with the, with empathy, with the understanding that to be critical thinkers, to be engaged in the world. And we watch, I watched with interest in Massachusetts. There was a big public debate about the comprehensive assessment in schools that was, that was to test proficiency in learning of K-12 students and was a condition of graduation, and the voters turned it down. And so I'm intrigued with sort of thinking this beyond, beyond sort of the accounting and business. I understand easily how competency-based works. How do you do competency-based criteria for the liberal arts program, the psych and American studies? How do we make sure that we're giving people the opportunities to learn how to learn, to learn how to think, to be engaged citizens, which I think is foundational to higher ed?
Lisa. Yeah, if I could speak to that. So I'm a sociologist and I teach 10 courses on Yourpace. I really appreciate, Sharla, that you mentioned you cannot have speed over quality, right? I think one of the things that we do as a state school and a nonprofit is that we're controlling this curriculum. This is not a plug-and-play. And you have to have full-time faculty in charge of the curriculum. And it has to mirror what someone coming to a classroom on this campus would experience and the expectations we would have for them to pass, which is a huge pivot from the way faculty usually teach. So it takes a lot of time to figure that out and to figure out if it works for you as a faculty member. But it can be done. It is difficult, the higher courses that you get, the more, I would say, specified skills, because there's not an open-source textbook to help you deliver that content to the students. So it certainly can be done, but it is very pedagogically labor-intensive to set up. I'm excited to hear from UMF and UMF Fort Kent that they want to be up there. But I will just tell you, I think it's naive to think it could be as early as Fall One. When I look at what we did here and how long it took, myself and one other colleague, it took us 18 months to get it ready to be live. So it is labor-intensive if you are going to ensure that quality from a faculty and curricular control side.
But what is the measure? Thank you. That was helpful. What is the measure of competency for empathy, for thinking?
I'd be happy to give, I'd be happy to say on that. So AACN, which is the American Association of Colleges of Nursing, empathy is one of their competencies. It's called, I can deliver empathetic care. And so part of the piece that we've been working around the country with nurses is, what do you mean by empathetic care? What does empathy look like? So in a competency-based program, it takes a word like empathy and says, what do we really mean by that? If somebody's being empathetic, what do they do? Oh, it means that they, this is not going to be the bestest of examples, but they get down on eye level. They call a person by name. They adjust their approach based on their cultural requirements. They, so you describe, what do I mean by empathy? What do I mean by?
But that's still caring. That's still a function, a task, a skill, a nursing skill. I'm trying to get it, maybe President Rice, as an English professor, can help me out. But how do we measure, how do we measure competency of an American Studies degree, of an English degree, of a?
Sure. Well, I, I teach, I've taught Introduction to Ethics in a live environment, in a traditional online environment, right? Week by week with assignments and in competency education now. So I think empathy is a great example to use because Lisa would probably agree with this. My definition, personal definition and exercise of empathy might differ slightly from Lisa's, right? Even though there's a lot of overlap of them. And that happened. So if we're teaching the same course, she might look at that term empathy and practice it in her course, whether it's in Yourpace or whether it's live in a criminal justice class she's teaching in a classroom, slightly differently than I, I would. And without coming up with those categorization and terms and assessments, we don't, we can't recognize what we agree upon in delivering that term empathy. Because like, measure empathy? If I asked everyone around this table, how are you going to measure empathy? You're going to get? You're going to give me totally different answers on that unless we have a rubric and an assessment and agreed-upon set of outcomes that we would then, performance indicators, right, that we would measure through that process, which is where the emphasis in competency education really has to look at so we understand all of our faculty, all of the assessments happening across the board, are looking at the same terms and looking at the same desired outcomes and the same measurements for those outcomes. So I know that's not, you know, an absolute perfect question, but I questioned whether I could deliver ethics in competency education until I started doing it. And every day I have interaction with, I had an interaction just this morning with a 37-year-old single dad with two kids, one kid getting ready to go to college, and we were talking about a whole bunch of philosophic moral issues and choices that people have to make in that kind of engagement. So we were able to have that framework because we were using the readings and the assessments for him as he was testing these out, and then he was asking me questions about that. So, and that happens whether it's a live, face-to-face classroom or whether it's something that's asynchronous with people, you know, continents away, so.
If I actually, so I have a rubric in front of me.
That's really, yeah, I want, criminal justice is all about empathy.
Right, so one of our program learning outcomes is...
Empathy was just an example. I didn't mean just focus there. I mean to focus on, how do you measure the competency of somebody in liberal arts?
Right, so one of our program learning outcomes is recognizing human bias and employing emotional intelligence, right? So exemplary says, "The student recognizes human biases and effectively employs emotional intelligence across a variety of situations within the practice of criminal and social justice and understands the importance and influence of these skills." So this is for a capstone where they're actually doing their fieldwork. So this is someone actually often working in their job. So they have to say, "I did this and I worked with these people, and I understood that when I showed up in a uniform, they had assumptions about me, and I probably had assumptions about them. So what do I have to do to mitigate that? And how do I have to understand their points of view? And how does that lead to better learning outcomes?" And they describe that to me and then say, "Which shows I am proficient in this." So that's an example in a capstone of how I'm measuring that. I don't know if that's helpful.
If I may, Chair, I think part of the question, and I guess tend to agree, is learning how to learn, right, versus empathy? And so how do you measure, I think, learning how to learn? Is that fair?
That helps.
I think to add to what's been shared, I would agree that the language of the rubrics, regardless of the discipline, is really, really important because you want some clear and qualitative description of what empathy, what collaboration, what flexible thinking, what professionalism looks like. Because as important as the skills are and the knowledge pieces of what we're teaching, those cross-disciplinary skills, the approaches, those habits of mind, we know are really, really important as well. So I think assessment design, rubrics. I also think adding in opportunities for reflection in those performance-based and project-based assessments is not only really important, but something we focus on very much so across modalities, in particular in competency-based. So as an example, if someone is submitting in a class, teaching students with disabilities and inclusive classrooms, the product might be a philosophy of inclusive practices. But that reflection is a mock interview with the school board where there can be a demonstration of some of those skills, not only in the knowledge, but the approach to that discipline. And I know it's a little bit different perhaps with liberal arts, but I think some of the approaches will sort of, will be across all disciplines. And then if I could just talk a little bit about the graduate space and opportunities, I think that there is ripe opportunity for growth in that particular area because our students are saying, so what's next? Where next? And I think there's, again, great opportunity for us to be able to provide that and that flexible pathway.
Habits of mind, nice phrase. Trustee McMahon.
You talked about competency-based nursing training. Is there any data to show whether the NCLEX pass rate is better for competency-based training versus traditional training?
So I can't speak on behalf of AACN, but what I would say, and I've heard them say in these workshops around the country, is an NCLEX is a minimum bar. It's what can get you that license, but it doesn't always mean that you're practice-ready at the bedside. And so we need to have both the NCLEX pass rate and the competencies at the bedside. We know that only 9% of nurses that pass the NCLEX have been deemed practice-ready by their practice partners in a recent study at graduation. And so it is one of the reasons why AACN moved to a competency-based approach, that they want to take NCLEX pass rate and add to that an assurance of learning through competencies so that that 9% in the recent study of being practice-ready will go up because they'll have both the confidence and the competence to do that job on day one. So NCLEX pass rates, I don't think that they're seeing necessarily a difference in the NCLEX pass rates. I think they're seeing and hoping to see a continued difference in being practice-ready day one of nursing. And again, I'm speaking only from what I've heard them say in sessions. I can't speak on behalf of AACN as an organization.
Trustee Baldacci.
Thank you for the presentation. I am curious about the experience in Alabama where they are working a little bit more with state government and the workforce sector and, you know, a more coordinated approach. Are there thoughts to doing something similar here in Maine with educating career center employees at DOL about resources here? Maybe it's not, you know, as advanced as Alabama, but at least, you know, if there are jobs that are in high demand, having trouble filling, is there a way to work backwards to provide education to those who are helping job seekers in Maine?
There are those around the table that probably have even more information about that, how to answer that question than I do. But I can say we are poised to be able to move those kind of conversations forward in a way that even four years ago we weren't able to do. So if you had asked me that question when we started this program, there was no way we could do that in this state. We didn't have articulation agreements between the community college, between the university. We didn't have a shared framework for general education outcomes. We didn't have the kind of robust engagement with the workforce communities and leaders that we have now. So I think we have an opportunity to investigate that and implement through, you know, the standards-based learning that we're now able to look at and guarantee occurs through the credentials of value that we offer that we weren't able to do before we started this process. Both when the system started this process through unified accreditation and looking at the kind of things, including the stuff that Robert Placido is going to report on very soon, a lot of these things we've done behind the scenes poise us to be able to do that work, which I'll admit, five, six years ago, Rosa Reddona did an awful lot of work with me and others at the provost level with the community college to try to get to that point where we could, we can make these connections, all the way from early college classes all the way through. So it was very frustrating that we were at a place way behind Alabama and a bunch of other states that we looked at at that time. How do we get there? Because we knew, we knew we were falling not just off of an age demographic cliff, but also whether people were prepared enough for the workforce. And with everybody, you know, retiring out, and we knew that we had a crisis looming, that we didn't have enough people coming into the workforce. So that's why a lot of us started into that work. So I think we have the tools now to move that kind of a situation forward that we see in other states, if, you know, that's the direction we choose to go.
So, if I might.
Sure.
I, you know, I visit with corporate leaders and the largest employers in the state, and I have to tell you that there is great excitement about this program for workers that they currently have who haven't completed a baccalaureate or want to study on a master's level or just wants to get another talent set. And one of the big selling points of our approach as a university system to these employers is the availability to offer this program and in furtherance of presently hired workforce, which they are interested in developing additional skills for. And that's one of the great selling points of our system right now in the state, based on the work that was done back in 2017, but grows every single day. There's excitement, real, genuine excitement.
And the notion of creating those, linking with those work centers would be fabulous.
We do, we're tiptoeing, I think, into that with apprenticeships that we're doing, for example, with SAD1 here in Presque Isle and also with the Department of Labor, looking at edtechs who are employed and the knowledge and skill that they have from being on the job. And working closely with Dr. Jim Barasa here, we've started a crosswalk to take a look and see everything from knowing the IEP process to being able to differentiate lesson plans. So really breaking apart our courses into what students know and are able to do and then crosswalking it with what they are working and doing every day with that mentorship at that school level. So I do think we're starting specifically in the education pathway.
Trustee Flood.
Thank you. I heard you, Dr. Long, I believe I heard you say that if you look at CBE in its totality, it's a skills-first basis of teaching, learning, skills-first is the thing. And I also think I heard you say that it can be taught onsite, it can be taught through a hybrid modality, it can be taught exclusively online, as long as the acid test is skills-first learning. So my question, I guess, for our organization, Ourpace, how much of our skills-first basis CBE training is done onsite? How much of it is done hybrid? How much of it is done online? I've always kind of had this perception that it was all done online, but I may be wrong. I just was wondering if you could reflect, President Rice, on what is the percentage of this CBE that is done in these different methods? Thank you.
Our program is 100% asynchronous online. That was a conscious choice we made at that point. But what you mentioned, what you just described, is a process we went through when we were aligning with proficiency education K-12 standards that was, that was part of legislation at the time, back in 2014, I think, when I became provost. My boss, the president, said, "You need to do this and basically get to outcomes-based assessment and standards for the university," which led us to SEABEN, where we didn't quite fit because we were doing something called proficiency education in the state of Maine. And so all of my faculty and our instructional designers work on the principles that you just heard described with our entire curriculum, no matter how it's delivered, whether it's delivered here onsite in a live course room or whether it's delivered in a traditional 15-week, eight-week online environment or a hybrid or a high-flex environment, which a bunch of our faculty do in the business program, for instance. So, but Ourpace program happens, yes, is, was structured as an asynchronous web-based program, very specifically to meet the needs of those that needed to complete a degree. But that is something that could be utilized in multiple modalities across the system.
Great. Well, thank you very much. This has been extremely informative, and it's clearly a sea change in education, harder for some of us to grasp than others. Did, oh, I'm sorry, but we also, Trustee...
You finish your comment first, please.
I want, go.
I just wanted to add at the end, so I, Sharla and I had a great discussion last night. When I joined the board, I had a lot of conversations with folks around the idea of the 50,000-foot view of what does it mean to be a university? What are we producing? Most of those conversations that I've had, you know, initiated with myself or others have been on the scale of a sliding scale, left to right, you know? Are we producing worker bees, workforce development, or are we producing citizens? And I brought that up to Sharla, and I'd invite her, if she still remembers the conversation, I can do a paraphrased version of it. But she gave a fascinating answer that kind of changed my perspective from looking at that as an either-or on a sliding scale to something that can, you know, coexist at the same time. As in, in order to do competency-based education, we don't have to give up the idea that I think, you know, Chair Riley was alluding to of, you know, how do you do the liberal arts, the ethics, the sometimes intangible things? If she remembers that, I'd like her to give a similar answer, but I can paraphrase.
You're far more memorable than that. So I totally remember the conversation. It was poison in either-or. You're either this wonderful liberal arts education institution or you're a skills-based, workforce-driven program. And I don't think that's the case at all, because if you look at the list of competencies a workforce wants right now, their empathy, their collaboration, their good communication skills, they're the things we teach in a liberal arts education. Oftentimes, what we see is we don't use same language. Over here, we're calling it one thing like critical thinking. Over here, we're calling it problem-solving and decision-making. But if we would really look at the underlying behaviors, we're not actually in conflict at all. We're actually, A, we're doing it, but we've got to learn to use language and drive to what are those performance we're expecting? We're actually both. We are honoring and developing those liberal arts competencies. We're using language that resonates with an employer in the process and getting them workforce-ready practice partners or employees because they're developing, and we're holding true to that, the competencies we want out of a liberal arts education. So it's a both. And I encourage us to not think of it as either-or, but to really anchor our language and what do we want from that and how does that serve both? Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Worth, for giving us the perfect way to end this discussion. That was a great way to conclude, and thank you so much for your, all the information. It's been extremely informative. Thank you. Why don't we, why don't we, the next item is the long-awaited da-da-da-da-da Unified Catalog. So to make sure we have rapt attention... So, to make sure we have rapped attention. Could I have everybody back, please? Great. Let us, we've, this board has been eagerly awaiting this presentation, and as Carolyn noted, Robert Placido launched this work in his last role at the University of Maine System, and the chancellor was able to lure him back to close the deal. So we are very, very pleased to welcome Dr. Placido back and to hear the update of the long-awaited and much-anticipated Unified Catalog, or whatever we're supposed to call it.
Exactly. So pleased to be here today. This has been a culmination of years' worth of work, as you already pointed out, that we have the final pieces that I'll demonstrate today. But because it was such an arduous journey, I want to just take a few minutes to thank everybody. First, thank you to the trustees for conceiving this vision more than four years ago. This will be amazing for our students, and putting students first is near and dear to all our hearts. Thank you to the chancellor for his leadership to keep us all focused on the goal over this whole time period. Thank you to Jeff, Carolyn, and Ryan, really have executed things that other systems, and I've worked in a few, would never dream about even tackling. Just amazing work. Wanted to thank the faculty, and many of them sitting around the table today, whose partnership really made this possible. Without the ability to come to the table and create the MOUs and rethink how we do things, we would not be where we are. Of course, we couldn't do any of this without the collaborative group of presidents that you all have collected. They really have done a remarkable job navigating this together. I wanted to thank my technical team. They thought I was crazy a couple of months ago because I upped the timeline on them, and they pulled it off. Tiffany, Myri, Christina Stevens, and Lori Osno in particular, just amazing work, that blood, sweat, and tears over the last couple of months to make this. And if, I didn't say, we are live on these new systems as of right now. The, finally, a special thanks, and I didn't mention this to President Edmundson, but USM really stepped up in the final hours to be a pilot of something that we really didn't have on our roadmap to deliver this quickly. But you piloted with us, did all the setup in a time when it was super busy, and in particular Karen Perez, she just did a marvelous job getting this to the finish line so that we could demonstrate it for you today. And that piece is the degree planning tool. So in addition to the Unified Catalog search tool that I'll show you this morning, I'm also going to show you our degree planning tool, which will have even more impact to students. It allows students to proactively map out their entire academic journey, do what-if scenarios for planning so that they and their families can see what the roadmap is and chart out their success. And of course, very important to people like trustee McMahon, that community college students can also have access to this to see how they can navigate their way from a community college degree right into one of our degrees, to see all the courses they need and everything at their fingertips. So enough, thank you to everyone for putting students first. Enough talking, more showing. Thanks. So, like I said, this is live today, and this isn't a training session by any means, but I want to demonstrate that the functionality exists. So the challenge, this will seem fairly simple and straightforward, and that's good. That means the tool is doing what it should. It should be intuitive. You don't need much training to do it. But behind the scenes, it took all of those MOUs, the articulation agreements, all of the collaboration, getting our system set up. We have seven institutions that have and need some local controls, and they have their own student system. So how do you get a tool that sits on top of that and is seamless so that students don't see those barriers? And that's what the journey was all about. So all of those things led up to this. So you can see that I'm in what the students would see here, and you have system-wide course search. I'm able to select the universities, I've got them all selected here, the term I'm interested in, my degree, or my career. And then I have subjects. I thought the team was thoughtful in putting, along with just the subject, which degrees, which universities offer those subjects. I'm going to do computer science just as the sample here. You can see we have all kinds of search criteria so that students get right down to what they need to include the very complicated requirements for gen ed at each of our institutions. It will show them which gen eds they need right from the search tool. I've got selected here online as a modality. You can see we have on, you know, blended, face-to-face, and so forth, so they can really fine-tune what they're looking for here. Then when they search, this is searching and not just something static that we have to keep updating and so forth. This is searching right into their live student system so that we get the number of seats available, real-time, and the real-time data in case that gets updated by the registrars and so forth. And then I can go into any of these particular courses, and I can get all the rest of the information. So our description, the textbooks, requirement, special requirements, corex, prerex, all of those kinds of things. And I will draw your attention down here to the real meat of this, besides everything else, is that we want to make this easy for students to find a class, but once they find a class, we want to make it easier for them to enroll. Carolyn mentioned earlier that we do have a process now to still honor the local control, where the students fill out a study-away form so that they can get admitted at those institutions. And once they, once they do that, then these buttons will be highlighted. If they're not admitted to that institution, they're not quite there yet, they can't do it until they do that step. So I'm just, I'm pointing that out and being specific because we've got faculty seeing this for the first time, and I'm ensuring you that we're honoring that agreement. But we have the ability to do, once they get the form submitted, now these will be highlighted so that the students can enroll right from here. This particular student is a USM student, so let me just find a Southern Maine. So this is a Southern Maine class in computer science, again, all the information I need. But notice I have more buttons now because I am a student here, so right from the search, I can do the enrollment. I can get all the information I need about deadlines and other information, because, again, I'm an active enrolled student here. But, and bringing me on to my next topic about the degree planning, I can add this right to my degree plan if I'm not ready to enroll, so I can use the search tool to create my entire plan and build an academic journey for myself. So any questions on the search tool?
Can I just, could you go over that form? So I, this is fabulous, but you can go online to register, but what is the form issue that they have to complete?
So they still have to be admitted to our institutions, so, and that's for a number of reasons, accreditation reasons and so forth. But we've streamlined that process, and that's outlined in the detailed document I gave you about the Unified Catalog initiative. But, but once they do have that box checked, they don't have to do anything manual, the students won't see any of that, that process like they used to have to call people up. Now it's, now they'd be enabled, and they can just go find their classes from those institutions and enroll.
You mean the study away form?
Yeah, the study away form.
And that's an online form?
Yeah, and we do have the ability now to even make that automated, but we haven't quite got there yet.
So my question was about the study away form. Is it live now that people can use it? Like, because faculty don't know that.
That's because every university's faculty, except UMPIs, has adopted the online study away. We have had conversations with President Rice, who's now not here. You still use a product called FormStack, as you know, Lisa? We have encouraged President Rice to speak with the faculty about getting on board with this. To Robert's point and to answer Tricia's question, the online study away form is the bridge, you know this, shares information that the home institution needs to share with the students' away institution for study away purposes. It provides that point of contact. It provides that point of contact for registrar, financial aid, advising purposes. Everybody else is on it. We're hoping to get UMPi onto it.
Okay, I will say that, so the faculty reps have a common document that we work on together, as, and there were, there were faculty from other campuses that didn't know. It wasn't just me. So, it wasn't just UMPi faculty that maybe didn't know that it was live. The other thing is, my understanding of the study away form, if I'm trying to picture it, it also allows the, like advisor, if I was going to send someone to USM to take a course, to say, this course is going to come in for this student's requirement. So, that's all going to be covered on that as well, right?
It does, and the other form of safeguard for the, for the students' purposes, and Robert's shown some of this in what the screens you've seen, things like instructor permission are still in place, prereqs, reserved seats, all the things that faculty need to do to advise their students, those are all still there. What Robert is alluding to is that, is that we now have the capacity to render all things that were once manual instantaneous, which is the big...
Right, they used to have to walk around from building to building to get the...
With a physical piece of paper, yes.
Right, so my question, my next question is for you, Robert. If they do not have that study away form completed, so that the thing has happened, I missed it, will they be told, you need to do this, like if that isn't open here for them in the search?
So, our suggestion is, we have the ability to put a button right on that form to say, "Request."
Request it? Oh, okay, but that's not, that's not there. That's your suggestion, but we haven't, you haven't done that yet?
We haven't done that yet, because we got to run that by you guys.
Okay, all right.
Lisa, I was going to suggest, in Ray's absence, you should approve it right now. He walked in, and then he walked back out, so I say approve it.
So, I've switched over to the degree planning tool. This is going to be so huge for students. Imagine, you know, people like me or my age, when I went to school, I had, my degree plan was a single piece of paper, and had it all the courses, and had little checkboxes. It was so easy, because you just had to take the courses that they told you you had to take. It is just not the way it works anymore. We have transfer students, we have equivalencies, we have prereqs and corex, and it is just super complicated. So, that's why it's even more important that our faculty serve as advisors, because they have to sit down and help the students navigate what, what their options are. Not to mention that we have courses that are offered once, you know, once in the fall, and if the student doesn't get it that fall, then they, they're behind a whole year. And it's really hard to see that roadmap with the students if you don't have a system for it, and you're sort of doing it all manually. And across, you know, the whole state, it's not manual everywhere. Let me just say that. Some departments have really good processes internally, but it's not a centralized, common process across the state until today. So, we have the degree planning tool up here. I'm logged in as a test student. You'll notice around the screen here that we have these little light bulbs that you can click on, because the students will be seeing this for the first time. It will explain to them each of the elements of the screen, what it's, what it's saying. But up at the top, you can see, it should all be very intuitive, that they've completed this many credits, they're in progress for this many credits, they're planned this many credits, so they're, they're on the path to get their 120 credits for this particular degree. And then they can open up their past courses and see their history, so see if there are issues there, or just, just to have the list of their, their courses. But the, the big thing here is the planning. So, you can see this is a current term, where there, the student is enrolled, but now we have all the future terms to complete this degree with all the courses that they need to take. Inside this, there, I could talk about this for a long time, because there's lots of technology in here, but again, what makes this complicated is now we allow students to retake a class to get a better grade, right? I mean, to, to complete their degree, sometimes they, they got an F, they got to retake it or whatever. So, that makes the plan even more confusing, is, you know, how do I retake that, and how's that affect my GPA? So, you can see this particular class, it tells them, you've already taken this class, but I see that you're retaking it to get a better grade. So, all of that complexity is built, built in here, and we can scroll down. So, so this is a boon for the students. At the top, you'll see that I have versions of plans. Students sometimes want to change what they're doing. And what's frustrating for an advisor is you'll sit down with the student and create a plan, and then they come back in four months later, and they're on a completely different journey, and you're like, wait, I don't think that's what we talked about, and where's the history? So, you'll see that advisors here, in this example, an advisor created this plan for this student, and it's locked. So, now that you've, you've got, as an advisor, you have, well, this is what we discussed last time, at least as a place to have a conversation. But the student can still go in here and create many plans to see what they want to do. And in fact, this will be really helpful for our community college partners and students, that they can come in here and do what-if. So, I'm in a degree, and I want to create, I want to know that if I switch my degree, how is that going to impact? And so, I can go in here, and it gives me the instructions, and it walks me through a little, you know, a scenario of what you're, what you're planning to do here, so I can choose the term that I want to start. Let me just start in the fall. I'm an undergraduate. I want to use, and I'm just switching, we'll just take these defaults. I'm switching to this biology major, human biology, and then I can add scenarios. I'm not going to add a scenario here, but if I wanted to do minors and things like that, which is something a lot of our students do. And then I can just run the report, and it will, it will take all of my past academic history, and it will build out a potential future plan for me. Will also tell me, give me warning signs here. You can see that this particular student hasn't satisfied various items and so forth. And then I can go back to my planner and see that in my, my list over here. So, one last thing, I guess I won't take the time to go over to it. I just give you the image, visual image. Now that we have students and all of their plans in the system, so we have their future enrollment, for the first time, we can forecast future enrollment down to the class level. So, the academic leaders in the room, imagine being able to see, how many class sections do I need in spring or next summer, so far in advance? Because oftentimes, we're waiting for the enrollments to roll in, to see what it's going to pan out to be, before we start calling adjuncts in and, you know, doing all of that, those operational tasks. So, to be able to do eight months, nine months ahead of time, know about what our forecasted enrollments are going to be. And everybody I tell this to says, well, students don't always follow the plan. Yes, that's true, they drop out and, and other things, but we have at least a benchmark of, we have this many students who need Math 101 in the spring next year. So, so huge barriers down, barriers down for students to find classes, barriers down for students to see the path, to be able to execute and, and complete their degrees. Questions?
Whoa.
I know.
Robert, you started with all the thank yous, and I want to, on behalf of the board, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
It's great, great progress. Questions? Trustee Martin?
This is amazing, a long time coming. Thank you for your work on this, and everybody else that was involved. I got two questions. It sounds like this is available just for students that are enrolled right now.
Kelly, can you go on mic? Push it. Thanks.
Okay, so I'll repeat, I'll repeat the question for everybody. So, it sounds like, two questions. The first question would be, it sounds like, to be able to get access to the system, you have to be a student here. Am I hearing that correctly?
As of today, but the intent is, when we do the rebranding of the system site, we're rolling out on that site. This, it'll look the exact same as what you just saw, but guest students from anywhere will be able to go there and do the what-if planning, and do search and all of that. They just won't be able to enroll until they...
So, it would, it would be able to be used as a marketability of our seven campuses throughout? That's, that's amazing. And my second piece is my favorite question, and I'm sure you're going to love this one. Can you speak to the role of AI, and how it's going to play in the functionality of this system, of this platform? Are we going to be here till tomorrow?
I know, yeah. I'm filtering. First of all, you can't, you can't begin to use AI until you have the data in the system. So, again, that was why we pushed the, the team to get the degree planner out so soon, because now we have the forecasted enrollments for the future. Now we can begin to run that through, and I'm sure Ryan already has some ideas on models that we can do and applications. We can run through course analysis, forecast analysis. We can even help students with that kind of thing, to say, you know, based on your progress that we have now in the system, and what you're planning to do, what, what your impacts are, and what your gotchas could be, and all of those kinds of things. But again, we, we couldn't, you couldn't really start to use the AI until the data's there, you know, so.
Thank you for your answer. This is, this is great, and I, I feel that as, as a student many years ago, and it was a straight line, you had to check the boxes off on, on a paper, and you got your, your degree if you fulfilled all the requirements. But I still felt that there was such tremendous amount of stress in, in planning your course load, and you had to make sure you didn't miss a semester, or you were behind another year. And now there's so many more complexities, that I have to believe that having a tool like this is going to increase student success and retention. And I think that's very important.
Yeah, me too, and I'm, I'm real excited to see future presentations where we're showing the KPIs and all the needles going up.
Trustee Hazzie?
So, another AI question for you. How far out are we until, on the user, sort of student side, students can talk to a sort of AI agent or GPT saying, "Design a five-course schedule. I never want to take a class on Wednesday nights. Second summer, I am tied up, and I'm willing to do weekend work."
I mean, I think that question is such a moving target, but fast, is what I would say. Now, now that we have, again, we have the data in the system, I would have said, as somebody who's built systems, software systems from the ground up in the past, it would be sort of a couple-of-year endeavor. Now we're building whole systems in two months. So, you know, I wouldn't be surprised with the change, and Ryan and I were just talking that, you know, we flip-flop almost weekly, you know, one week where Google doesn't work, ChatGPT is the best. You know, this weekend, we're, we're saying, oh, well, I will do everything in Google. You know, next weekend, it's going to be Claude, or, you know, something else. So, and same thing on program development, that, that is just so rapid. So, I really wouldn't be surprised if we see fully functioning AI on top of this by next fall, so.
So, I'm a student, I assume my students choose their classes already, so they know what they're planning, but over the summer, I decide I really don't want to take organic. Can I go on now and make the switch?
Yep.
Wow.
Nobody wants to take organic.
I know nobody does. Who've we got?
We'll use AI to convince you not to, but...
Trustee Keller?
Hi, all of this sounds really good. I'm just curious as to how, if we're developing an AI, like chatbot, that's going to be always available, how's that going to affect more traditional registrars and their offices?
Well, hopefully, it reduces the number of phone calls, because there are so many calls they get that are just a common question that could be answered quickly on somebody's phone, where they just say, "Tell me the deadline," or, you know, "Can I take this class?" kind of questions. We've actually been working on those bots already, independent of this. So, we have bots for the APLs, bots for the Board of Trustees' policies, we have a bot at the help desk for basic questions. The, like I said, the registrars have put a group together to answer some basic questions. So, I, I still don't think, you know, it's 100% replacement. Some people want to talk to a person, so we're not going to bypass that. But if you can get your question answered in minutes from your laptop at midnight, that's, that's going to be a boon for a lot of people.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thanks for the question.
Trustee Worth?
As a student, I was following you along in my own login throughout, and it was fantastic, and everything worked very well. The only question I have is, I'm sure this will happen for other students, something went wrong on mine when I tried to do the degree planner just now, and I got like an oops error screen. I'm sure it's some, you know, tiny little nuance in my degree program, stuff like that. Is there any possibility or a plan to have a capability in here as this rolls out to more students? And maybe we find, oh, you know, if, if you're categorized as a one instead of a zero in the system, then it gives you an error message. Is there a way to put on this screen, like a, a feedback button or a contact? So, like, for example, mine says, "Oops, an unexpected error, primary student path not found." Would it be nice if on this screen it says, is, who do I talk to? Do I reach out to my advisor? Would they say it's too technical? Would IT say, "Reach out to you"? Is there a way to have, or who, what is, what is your answer for that?
And I'll, I'll come over to see what, what happened there. So, I will say that we, we rolled this out, we had in our plan to roll this out in fall, and then training for advisors in September and October. We pushed so that we could do this demo and get it live right now. And one of the things we had to change was, we had to turn it live for the whole system. But some programs are more complicated in their planning than, than others, and the faculty need to sign off on those. So, we did set it up where a program at a time can be set up and released. Students can still use the tool, or you should be able to still use the tool. You just won't get your advisor-advised plan, because that hasn't been created yet. But you could go in and make your whole plan, so we'll see how, why that's not working here in a second.
Professor Laduk?
My, my question is, is there a way to have in the system, you know, multiply this problem by 100 students, say it happens? Is there a way to have, so you don't have to do a one-on-one with each?
Right, right. Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea to put some sort of button there to say, "Contact," or just direct you right over to somebody to say, "I see you're having a problem."
Lisa?
Well, Trustee Eames has had her hand up, so I'll defer to her first.
Sorry. Trustee Eames?
Yeah, thank you. As one of the trustees that's been on the board the longest, this, this discussion around a Unified Catalog has been ongoing since, I don't know, Robert, probably the late 19, 2019, 2020. But thinking about the board and thinking about priorities, I think it was about 18 months ago, I don't know how long you've come back, Robert, but the board set it as a top priority, and the chancellor hired you back, and it's now done, in, or almost there. And so, I want to just congratulate the board, the chancellor, Robert, and everybody that made, and Jeff, of course, that made this happen, because when we all work together and we work towards, this needs to be done, it's got to get done, and, and now we're just about there. So, I think it's important to take a moment to recognize when we all make a priority, things actually happen.
Maybe we ought to end now.
Professor Laduk? It's more of a, so I've been here 23 years, so I remember advising, I don't know, Ray, if you remember what the system was before Main Street? It was like a DOS-based system? It was rough. And when Main Street came along, which was called PeopleSoft at the time, everyone was so excited about the degree plan, including myself, who had paperwork up on paperwork for advisees. And I soon found out, within a couple of years, that they loaded the degree plan, but it did not have any flexibility and was not nimble for any changes. So, within five years, it was basically extinct for me. So, my question is, how nimble, and how is it going to be built in when people change things in a degree plan, in a requirement, in a minor, in what will work for what? How nimble is this going to be to react to that live?
Real-time. So, that, that is absolutely the problem with that. The way that was set up is, essentially, you had to run new processes that kicked off new plans, and then the old plans were extinct, whereas this one gets updated in, in real time. So, and, and, and to make that even more complicated, it has to, it has to understand and adhere to all the rules at each of the campuses, all the different coding at each of the campuses and so forth, and, and do that in a way that, that the student doesn't see all that complexity. So, I think you're really going to enjoy it. I can't wait to, to hear your feedback on it.
Right, so for an example, when you talked about the student retaking a course because of an F, I, I know, for, at UMPi, our policy is, if a student gets an F and retakes a course here, their new grade replaces the F in their GPA for that one retake. But if they take the course somewhere else and transfer it in, that doesn't necessarily happen. happen, right? So they're still carrying that F, pulling down their GPA. I'm just wondering if that kind of information would be available to them? If they're like, "Oh, I can take it wherever and transfer it in." There's actually a detriment to a student unless there's a really good reason of why they need to take it somewhere else for expediency or something else.
The nuance of the explanation, no, but the process once they get the course.
Okay.
Yes. But that, that's a good one. Yeah.
We don't want to have stump the star.
Trustee Kane.
Thank you. This is all very exciting. I remember I worked in the Honors College when we literally mapped out every single major at the University of Maine and every flavor of that major into eight semester line-by-line checklists so students could see what their paths were. And I spent months doing that, and so I want to thank you for past me that hopefully no one will ever have to do that again. But my question is, for those students who want to graduate in four years, who are not looking, who like want to take on more or do things differently or do multiple majors or, I saw the, the reference to the Honors Colleges in, the Honors Programs in the drop list, but is this built for that level of customization? Because I, I think in my advising experience, for, which I did for about 10 years, there was a lot of customized advocacy, having, helping people map out, right? In some cases, alternative pathways, not alternative requirements, not missing any level of classes, but sort of saying, "Okay, if you take these two things in the other order, you can get them both done, you can still graduate on time." Does this system allow for that level of customization, which I think, just having sat through the commencement last week at UMaine, there's a lot of students who are getting more and more creative or who want to take on multiple majors or minors, and how do we make sure we're able to have a system that adapts for them?
Yeah, so that, that dropdown at the top that I showed where there is an advisor locked, so you can have, you can save as many plans as, as you want as the student, and then you still have the reference to the traditional plan. But if I want to say, "Oh, I'm going to, I'm going to front-load and I'm going to take five classes a semester or whatever,"
Right.
I can build that. It doesn't prevent them from building it. What it will do is say, once they build the plan, do they meet all the requirements? So they can build the, the plan that meets their needs and add courses or whatever, and it's going to tell them, tell them that. And they can even exceed the number of credit hours, but it will say, "This, you know, this isn't going to count," or, you know, like for my kids, they had all sorts of AP credits, but they still wanted to be there for four years.
Right.
So they, they had to take courses that really didn't count towards their degree, but.
One follow-up, if I could. The other question is, the other thing I remember vividly was chasing down advisors to get them to sign off on the changes, like the non-traditional changes. Does this program automatically prompt that review to the faculty member to say, you know, "Here's what I want to take. It is not the normal course because I'm taking honors or I'm getting this other minor or I'm doing this other thing." Does it prompt that sort of approval from the academic advisor?
So the, you saw the little icon. So if there are special requirements for a course, it's going to tell the student and give them the instruction on what they have to do for that, that particular course, because there's 100 different nuances to that. Like they have to get special permission to take a lab or, you know, there's just a prereq to something. It gives them those instructions right on the screen. And if I didn't mention that the advisors have the same screen access.
Yes, okay.
So they can build the plans with the students.
Great.
Or if the student says, "Can you check my plan?" They can go in and look and see, see the plan real time with the student.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Seeing none. Thank you so much. This is very exciting. We look forward to the launch. And I'm sure Riley will report on how that issue got resolved.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you, Robert.
Great job, everyone.
Perfect presentation. And we know it was under, please thank your team. We know they were under forced march. Vice Pres, Vice Chancellor for Academic and Student Affairs, Jeff St. John.
I'm pleased to share admissions and enrollment update with the trustees. And just in case you're not aware of this, so in advance of every board meeting in the spring, I, I, I send the chair a note and I copy Carolyn, and I say, "I'm going to turn in my report to Beth a week late," because giving you the data two weeks out is just obsolete data by the time it ends up in board materials. And then I cheat and, and, and update the data the Friday before, so your materials are outdated anyway, but I'd be in trouble with my boss if I didn't give you the most current numbers. I was very proud of myself for running all the numbers over the weekend based on Friday's enrollment reports. And then I came in this morning, the chancellor said, "Are you using today's numbers?" So I'm, I'm 72 hours behind, but this is a very close approximation to where we are. And at, at the point at which I finish this report, it will also be obsolete. So here we are. We are, we are as follows, and I'll share a couple of different categories of enrollment and admission data with you. Our summer headcount, system-wide, we are up 827 students across our system compared to the same date last year. That's an 8.5% increase. We have over 10,000 individual students taking courses from our universities this summer, and we have not yet, as President Rice apprised you earlier, and Provost Margison, we've not yet fully populated the second summer session of Yourpace, so that number will, will go up. And that enrollment growth is across the system, not, not only in our competency-based programs. Our fall headcount for fall of 2025 right now is up 537 students over the same point last year. That's a 3.5% increase. And our most important number, active matriculated students for the, the fall semester, people who've said that they are coming to one of our universities and have done so by deposit or other form of confirmation and have not since then said, "I'm not coming to your university." Those are our act, active matriculated pool. I'm pleased to say we are up over 800 students compared to the same date last year. Significant growth for our, our system year over year. That growth is occurring at, at all of our universities. Yourpace is certainly a big part of it, but we also are seeing significant growth at Farmington, USM, University of Maine, Fort Kent. We are very, very slightly, UMA, very, very slightly behind the, the target set by Machias, but I have confidence that they'll catch up there. And it's, it's a minuscule number of students that are off right now. So really, system-wide growth in addition to what President Softley shared earlier about the size of, of her incoming class. I, I will say that trustees frequently ask, you know, "What are the reasons why we continue to see enrollment growth?" And you know about many of them already, the tremendous retention work that the presidents have done with their teams. There are also several ongoing initiatives that the trustees are all familiar with, but they, their cumulative effect continues to, to ramify each year as they become more and more embedded in our practices. Adult Degree Completion Initiative is one of them. The chancellor and, and Vice Chancellor Lowe supported three years. We just finished the third year of, third and final year of annual funding for the universities to put in a request for, for specific types of support, marketing, recruitment, website overhauls, new programming, hiring of, of staff to serve as, appoint people for adult degree completers coming in. You'll hear about that in just a moment. A second major initiative, and Robert just spoke about it, is transfer the work that all of the provosts, all of our faculty, academic leaders have done to update articulation agreements, to improve transfer processes, our registrars led by their presidents. Tremendous work has been done across the system. And I would also like to acknowledge Jamie Ballinger and Heather Ball on my staff, who've done the lion's share of the work to get the TransferMe agreement, our end of it, with the Maine Community College System up and running so successfully over the last several months. And then the third initiative is directed mission. I distinctly recall the look on our enrollment managers' collective faces when I passed along the chancellor's directive two years ago. "We're going to get directed admit up and running in 100 days in our system." It was as if everyone had eaten a bad pickle at the same time. It was a look I got back, but they did it. The enrollment managers did it, and 104 days later, we had a directed admit off the ground. Directed mission, as you'll hear in just a moment, is also directly responsible for some of the growth that we've seen across our system. We admitted more directed admit students for this summer and fall than we have in any year previous. We're up 166 students over our prior number, which is 16.2% growth year over year in a, in a program that's only two years old. Of those, 384 directed admit students are currently active matriculated students. That's up 12.6%. For any population of students, if you could say roughly, "We're going to have a 25% yield for this population at our universities," all of the enrollment managers would take that every day of the week, twice on Sundays. That's a huge return for the time and energy invested in, in directed mission. I would also like to thank Vice Chancellor Dorsey. She had a position on her staff that was discontinued, and the person in that role took over as part of her new duties, working with my office to support the management of directed mission, communication with the campuses, processing of data, and it's already produced a, an enormous benefit for our reach into Maine high schools for this program. Enrollment types, trustees are interested. Total undergraduate enrollment for fall 2025 is up 2.4% over last year, and that's with large classes graduating, replacing those classes along with students who've transferred out. So it's a net, net yield for us. Undergraduate transfer enrollment for fall 2025 is up 6.5% over last year. And graduate student enrollment for fall 2025, as of right now, is up 228 students. That's 8.7% growth. With, with the updates you've gotten from President and Vice Chancellor Frainy Mundy and others about the current challenges in multiple facets of graduate education, it's a testament to all of our presidents and, and their leadership teams that graduate programming continues to be so robust in our, in our system. I, I also promised the enrollment managers an opportunity, and I'll do this very briefly. I asked each of them about a week and a half ago to share me, share with me just a couple of points of pride. In particular, aspects of what's happening with enrollment and admissions at each university and Maine Law that wouldn't be self-evident just by going to the Tableau data on our, on our website. And I'll start with the University of Maine at Augusta, where apparently President Cushman's vice president shared the same two data points with her that she shared with you during the president's roundtable that he shared with me. So as an artful pivot, I will instead say, "The annual UMA Faculty Institute last Thursday was wonderful. President Cushman, thank you." Because I have no new enrollment information to share with you, but, but thank you for that. At the University of Maine at Farmington, deposits at Farmington are the highest they've been as of May 1st, Traditional Decision Day, since 2021. Highest deposits in four years, and the increase from last year is 10% year-over-year gain at Farmington. It's an incredible figure for them. I would also note that adult degree completion credit hours more than doubled year-over-year at Farmington. 960 credit hours this year as opposed to 426 last year. And the most important statistic of all, and I really just need to credit President McDonnell because he's led this from the very beginning, in, in the year 2024-25, by the end of this summer, the academic year just concluded, 31 adult degree completion students will have earned a degree from the University of Maine at Farmington in one year. That's in a three-year-old adult degree completion program. That's, that's an enormous accomplishment for Farmington. At Fort Kent, I'm pleased to say both at Fort Kent and at USM, nursing numbers are up. We're seeing a, a return in overall nursing admission and nursing enrollment. We're up about 106 students in nursing across the system with those two universities right now leading the way. Also at Fort Kent, overall matriculations are at a five-year high, and they're up 10% year-over-year. Out-of-state matriculations at Fort Kent are up 30% this year over last year, which is, again, a testament to the kinds of programming that President Hedin and her faculty are developing and advertising effectively to out-of-state students, particularly Canadian students, but, but others as well. At the University of Southern Maine, this year, USM saw an 18% overall increase year-over-year in May 1 deposits. There has also been at USM, from directed admit early college students year-over-year, a 59% increase in deposits. USM has really been leading the way in terms of capitalizing on directed mission, along with the University of Maine. There's also been a 9% increase in applications at USM from the Maine Community College System and a 3% increase in deposits from that population over last year, which is, which is great. At Maine Law, the interesting, President Softley's enrollment manager, Carrie Willschusen, chose to share some, some non-empirical pieces of information about what's happening at Maine Law that, that support their enrollment growth. Two in particular I think the trustees would be interested in. One, Maine Law is seeing, has seen this year an increase in mainers applying to law school for the first time in many years. Also, Maine Law continues to grow its pipeline from high schools, trying to get high school students interested in law and other professional programs before they even come to one of our four-year institutions. As an example of that, Carrie pointed out to me that, that Maine Law has a robust program in Southern Maine and is also holding an event this October at the Penobscot Judicial Center where they'll host about 100 high school students in a partnership between the law school and the Maine Judicial Courts and the Maine State Bar Association to help students learn more about careers in law, which is just fantastic. At the University of Maine and the University of Maine at Machias, Kevin Coglan, their enrollment manager, shared a couple of important points. The first is with respect to directed mission. For fall of 2025, University of Maine has admitted 51 more students via directed mission than it did the same time last year. That's a 15.2% increase in, in directed admit growth year-over-year. And the number of students who've deposited via that directed admit pathway increased by 18% in the same, same time. So again, a very short-term program, two years of data so far, but our two largest universities have seen a tremendous return on directed admit, especially the early college element of it so far. I would also note, because I know several trustees are interested in this, Kevin also shared with me a piece of information about aging. You've heard from the chancellor before, you heard it earlier today. Getting a decision to students as quickly as possible after they've completed and submitted an application, that's aging. You want your aging to be as, as, as short in duration as possible for any application. Kevin shared with me that admissions decisions at the University of Maine are now made, on average, within 1.8 days of a completed application being received. That's a 55% reduction in aging over last year and an 88% reduction compared to 2023. For our competitiveness as a university system, to have the flagship leading the way in, in that kind of process improvement is, is a tremendous achievement. Finally, at the University of Maine at Presque Isle, traditional applications, so this is, this is the non-Yorpace side of the house. Traditional applications are the highest they've been in the last five years, while confirmations are the second highest they've been in that same span. And also, Sue White, Director of Enrollment Services at, at University of Maine at Presque Isle, pointed out that she credited her, UMPi's collaboration with the University of Maine to automate summer financial aid awarding systems. This has allowed UMPi to turn around decisions for summer aid to Yourpace and other students infinitely faster than it was doing so in the past in what was previously a manual process. And that it's described by Sue as a huge factor in, in the growth of summer enrollment at Presque Isle. So in each of these areas, there's something really, really innovative and important being done by each of our universities. The president should be proud of this work, they all know about it already, but it's, it's just a testament to collective efforts that are ongoing right now in, in each of these areas. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions I can about enrollment and admissions at our institutions.
Any questions for Jeff? And I would just, fabulously encouraging news, and particularly for new members, there, there are data points that we will have confirmed October 15th when we know the actual enrollment, but it's all very encouraging that that number will be robust as well.
Trustee Alexander.
Thank you. I join with others in congratulating all of the universities and all of the work that is being done to show this, what is significant progress, excuse me. So I hate to be Debbie Downer here, but it would be helpful to have a recognition of what risks what risks that are on the horizon that might adversely impact this trend. I am particularly concerned about the potential drop in key social service funding due to federal budgeting changes and the impact that I understand at least one House committee has adopted to make Pell Grants a little less more available in terms of requiring higher volume of credits in order to get the full amount and reducing the minimum amount that would qualify for a Pell Grant. And it seems to me that that, those combination of things, you know, if people aren't getting food stamps, if Medicare for working age adults is not available for their disability, what impact might this have on our ability to attract enrollment of adult learners in particular? And what impact the Pell Grant reforms would have on our working students and those with children and everything else? So that kind of analysis would be something that I think the board should be receiving from time to time. Thank you.
And President Fraini Mundy.
Yes, I'll just thank you for that, Trustee Alexander. And because this, sort of the congressional actions about Pell are just formulating as we speak and we need to watch those, we're now in a position to be able to do that modeling that you described, and so that is something that we certainly will work on in the coming weeks.
And would those likely take effect, though, this September?
As I understand it, and President Edmondson is following this too, I believe those would take effect in '27, academic year '26-'27.
I mean, clearly something to keep watch, keep an eye on.
Yes, and looking at our multi-year financial projections, we would have to have that information. So we'll begin that modeling in a system-wide way as soon as we can.
And if they're implemented, it could have a retention impact more than an enrollment, probably.
Perhaps, yeah. We'll try to get more detailed fiscal information.
Yep, good question.
And as you do that, and I know you will do this because you do it all the time and you're very good at it, creating the story about what kinds of impacts this is going to have in a state like Maine and communicating that to our delegation in Washington will be very, very important. And you do this work very, very well, and I'm just making note of what I'm sure is the obvious next step. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the enrollment report? Seeing none, we're going to move on to 90 credit hours.
Just a brief update for you. Chair Riley, I shared an update with the trustees at ASA on April 28. Not too much to add to that. Between early February and mid-April, each of the university faculties who are working on one of the five pilot programs in this cohort of 90 credit programs, developed them, brought them through their campus-level curricular processes. They remain out for faculty feedback through the end of the month, through our Faculty Governance Council leadership. Most of the feedback that I received was earlier in the semester, chiefly in two areas. One, overwhelming faculty support for the restriction of the pilot to adult degree completers, that population, and significant and very, very helpful feedback from a number of faculty, including some of our faculty board representatives who are here today, about the naming conventions for these programs, but ultimately we settled on putting the word "applied" at the beginning of the name and putting 90 credit in parentheses at the end, and that will follow these programs for the duration. So we are clearly distinguishing them from regular 120 credit programs. The five programs are on the agenda for the June 23 ASA meeting, and I will issue again a call to any trustee who has any questions about these programs, their formation, the guidance that covers them, anything you would like to know in advance of ASA. I'm happy to speak to any trustee individually to get you prepared for that conversation to your satisfaction.
Thank you. Any questions now about the 90 credit hour?
I had a brief one.
Yep, Trustee Alexander.
Yeah, thank you. Your material in the board book, the update, it says, "This version reflects minor changes from the one shared in April." Is there any change that you wish to bring to our attention here?
No, I just updated briefly in a couple of areas. Nothing major or substantive, Trustee Alexander.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Great, thank you, Jeff. Thank you very much.
And I'm here with you, I think, chair for the next four tabs.
Okay, we are on to new academic programs.
As a brief overview for tabs 11, 12, and 13, each of these programs came forward at the April 28 ASA. There was a positive conversation led by Trustee McMahon around each of them, and feedback from the trustees around Zoom to the presentations by the provost and our president in each case for UMA, for USM, and for UMFK was positive. We had very, very good conversation around each of the three programs.
Great. So we will crank, and we will begin with UMA, new academic program AA in psychology. President Cushman.
Thank you. We propose adding an associate of arts in psychology at the University of Maine at Augusta. This proposal is part of our strategy to provide milestone stacking credentials for students, especially working, non-traditional students. And this is aligned with our previous efforts in creating associate's degrees. The discipline of psychology supports UMA's neurodiversity efforts, which can only be strengthened through this degree. UMA already has a psychology minor within our Bachelor of Social Sciences and additional sec courses that are core at our Mental Health and Human Services Program. So all of the courses are already created and regularly taught, and we have the faculty in place, so there are no additional costs to standing up this program. The field of psychology provides students with many opportunities in terms of career paths. This discipline would provide a path towards our graduate programs in trauma-informed emergency management and substance use disorder. Thanks to the psychology faculty, Doctors Cheek, Roth, and Corle and others spearheading the effort for working with their colleagues across the University of Maine system, and their efforts in this program development yielded supporting letters, a 2-plus-2 agreement with UMFS BA in Psychology, and a thorough transfer review of UMFK's program to ensure students taking courses there can meet the degree requirements. Finally, this program will be online as we continue our work to double the number of online programs. So by packaging existing online psychology courses into a 60-credit credential, the program provides a low-cost, high-impact pathway for Maine's 185,000 adults with some college and no degree. Its fully-online, eight-week delivery format and dedicated remote advising respond to the plan's call for any-place year-round access, while articulated 2-plus-2 pathways into bachelor's programs at UMF and USM exemplify the seamless progression envisioned under unified accreditation. Equally important, the credential aligns with Maine's acute behavioral health workforce needs, meeting the plan's directive to create innovative workforce-responsive programs. Embedded career preparation and optimal MHRTC micro-credential and strong lightcast labor market predictions tie degree outcomes to clear employment opportunities, strengthening the system's value proposition for students and employers alike. Finally, the program widens access for rural, first-generation, and military learners through open educational resources and trauma-informed pedagogy. In sum, the AA in psychology is a fiscally responsible, mission-aligned initiative that operationalizes the strategic plan's core goals: adult completion, online reach, workforce relevance, and inter-campus collaboration, while delivering measurable benefits to students, the University of Maine system, and the state's economy.
Thank you. And I'd remind everybody, of course, that these have come through the ASA Committee and bringing that recommendation with them. Questions for President Cushman? Seeing none, let me go to the resolution that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the Academic and Student Affairs Committee and approves the Associate of Arts in Psychology at the University of Maine Augusta. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Martin, seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? And our...
Trustee Eames?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Tab 12, new academic program proposal, BS in Forest Management, UMFK. Do I... Jeff, do you have... Go right to President Hedin.
Sure. UMFK plans to maintain and grow its Associate in Science and Applied Forest Management while attracting new students to its Bachelor of Science in Forest Management. UMFK's location is in the heart of Maine's North Woods, an industrial forest, and its proximity to the Alleghash Wilderness provides opportunities for experiential fieldwork and natural resource management in a variety of forest ownerships, habitats, and rural land uses. The strong presence of industrial and non-industrial forests and a healthy forestry sector in northern Maine provides opportunities for forestry experiential education and internships at a scale that is not available elsewhere in Maine and the northeastern U.S. In addition, UMFK currently enjoys strong support from Maine's forestry sector. For example, J.D. Irving provides financial and in-kind support to UMFK's forestry program through its funding of the Irving Woodlands Professorship of Forestry. This program will require four new courses to be added into the curriculum to be able to provide the BS in Forest Management. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for President Hedin? Chancellor has a...
Yeah, I just want to share a story. I did my spring visit to Fort Kent, and one of the things that I was pleased to participate in was a meeting with students. There were three forestry students in that panel, and all three of them said that if this was approved, they would stay at the university for their baccalaureate degree. Also, these are individuals who pointed out that they'd looked at other forestry programs in the state and in the region, and they're very, very excited about this, and it will help us grow, I think, our population over time at Fort Kent.
And your location in the great North Woods. Trustee Martin? Nope. Any other comments, questions? Forester Patrick Flood announces that you can never have too many forest managers. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Kane, seconded by Trustee Martin. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions?
Trustee Eames?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. And tab 13, new academic program, MS in Digital Marketing Analytics. President Edmondson at USM.
Yes, thank you. The digital marketing analytics master's degree at the University of Southern Maine is an opportunity for us as a system to expand the business offerings, the graduate business offerings that we have. This particular degree program has flexible learning pathways, cutting-edge curriculum, industry partnerships, and an opportunity for students to expand into a STEM designation, which will give them further career prospects. There is demand for this digital marketing professionals with a projected 8.3 increase in jobs for market research analysts and 36% for data scientists over the next decade. And so we believe that this unique program will offer an opportunity for USM to become a leader in digital marketing analytics and, again, expand the business offerings through the, at the system level. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Questions for President Edmondson? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Martin, seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? On online?
Trustee Eames?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Great. Tab 14, his tenure at time of hire in the professor in the College of Education and Human Development at Humane, and I, Jeff, you're handling that?
Happy to. So as you know from your materials, Provost Valan's letter summarizes the delineation of the circumstances of an opportunity hire articulated by interim Dean Kimball in his letter, and then in turn, Provost, President Fraini Mundy's letter reinforces and supports the letter produced by both interim Dean Kimball and by Provost Valan. Having read all the materials and the file itself, I'm fully supportive of this tenure at the time of hire and made that recommendation happily to the chancellor and now to all of you.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none. That the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the Academic and Student Affairs Committee and approves tenure at time of hire, professor of the College of Education and Human Development at the University of Maine with tenure to be effective 9/1/24. Motion?
Second.
Martin and Kane? All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions?
Yes, I'm abstaining, and let me explain. This person is my niece, so I have to abstain. But I also want to say that on May 6, she received the King's Coronation Award in Canada that recognized her work and her commitment to her community and province.
Great, thank you, and we totally understand why you're abstaining, and thank you for doing that. Online?
Trustee Eames?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. We now move on to the very important work of the Vice Chancellor Finance and Administration and the budget for the year ahead. And in Trustee Kate's absence, I want to say just a few words about the extraordinary work that Ryan and his team and all the presidents have put in to get us the budget that is balanced before us. There are challenges with admissions, there are challenges with cost savings, but we have a balanced budget and want to thank Ryan and his whole team for that incredible work. So the floor is yours.
Excellent. So I know you're excited to jump into the budget, but I have two more pieces of information for you first. Talk a little bit about investment results, as I always do, talk about where we are and a little bit of a bounce back there. Recall, three times a year, I report to you on the budget forecast, so how are we doing in the current year, so we'll talk a little bit about that. And then, as the chair previewed, we'll finish up with the FY '26 operating budget. I'll start with investment results. The managed investment pool information, as always, is in your materials, with a market value of $370 million at the close of March. We saw a loss of 2.6% in March, a gain of 2.2% fiscal year-to-date. Our investment advisor has estimated that the MIP gained about 0.4% for the month of April, based on index returns. The pension fund with a March market value of $16.4 million, also saw a loss for that month of 1.8% and a gain of 2% for the fiscal year-to-date. We estimate April gains were up 0.3%. And then finally, in the operating fund with a March market value of $278 million, we saw a loss of 0.3% for the month. We are up 4.1% year-to-date. This equates to a year-to-date net return of $9.7 million, or $7.2 million over our annual net investment return budget of about $2.5 million. The portfolio estimate is a 0.4% positive return in April. So always exercise caution on these, especially in this market that we're in, but definitely much better than when I was doing this presentation at USM and talking about a lot of really, really, really ugly numbers. And so if we end up there, then as we did last year, we'll come back with the chancellor and we'll present a recommendation for how we would allocate out any surplus funds to the extent they are there. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the FY '25 budget. So we're in that window of the year where we're talking about all kinds of budgets. So if you were with us last week at audit, we were talking about FY '24. We'll talk about the current budget, and then we'll shift over to '26. So again, we do forecasts in October, in February, and May of the current fiscal year. You see those right in front of you. We generally follow the same format. You're going to see a slide that looks structured similar to this when I get into the budget presentation. But let me just kind of walk you through this. This is the FY '25 budget actual forecast through April 30. Really, really strong budget forecast. This is probably one of the stronger budget forecasts that I've had an opportunity to deliver. For those that have not sat through a forecast before or forgotten how it's structured, let me walk you through this. So we'll start with University of Maine, University of Maine-Machias in the top left. We'll just work our way across. So the first number of budget is really the original budget. So go back to the budget you approved in May. What were the assumptions around that budget? So in the case of the University of Maine, you'll recall that we were planning, this is the third year of the president's plan to get back to a balanced budget at the University of Maine, and the final piece of that was about a $5 million transfer from reserves that would be necessary. And so that's where they started off the year. In October, they brought that down, and you can see it's kind of bounced around a little bit. Now the May forecast is in. We are projecting a deficit there, as you can see, of a little less than 4.8... We are projecting a deficit there, as you can see, of a little less than $4.8 million. What I'll mention about that, and you know, all credit to the team at the University of Maine, you see a little bit of up and down there, but if you start with the budget and you look at what the forecast is right now, that is a 2,000ths of 1% margin of error from the original prediction that they made back in May. So that is really impressive. Yeah. Nice work to Kelly and the team there.
Yeah, seriously.
So we drop down to UMA. What you see at UMA is still very positive, a little bit of an erosion of that original surplus. But again, recall here, I'm talking about surpluses. We're talking about the positive side, and so we are still there. The president talked a little bit about some of the enrollment numbers in the spring. We had a slightly different mix of credit hours than budgeted, a little bit down, and so you see now they're still forecasting a $200,000 surplus at the end of the year. So again, really strong picture right there. Farmington, we've talked about a lot, for sure. We, in October, we had a long conversation about the 1.2 number there. The campuses kind of been chipping away at that. You can see about $250,000 worth of progress. You heard some of the positive things. And so that's a number, when we talked about this in April, we questioned whether we'd be able to get that back to zero. And what we said is that before the end of the year, the chancellor and I will come back with a plan with you that will work out with the president and the chief business officer, and present that to you at an upcoming meeting. At Fort Kent, again, what you see here is generally, again, really, really solid budgeting here, largely about where we thought we would be in April, so currently forecasting about a $300,000 deficit. And a reminder, what you're seeing here is E and G and auxiliary combined. Your materials have those kind of broken out, but typically what you see on our smaller campuses is we're running auxiliary deficits, and we're running E and G surpluses to offset the two. And so you can dig a little bit more into the Fort Kent one there, but again, you can see largely tracking about where we were in at the end of the year. And if we end up in that deficit position, we'll use reserves at the campus to close that out. Presque, you know, just continuing the trend of the day and the weekend and the year, really strong, really strong budget numbers at Presque. You've heard all of the reasons why, so I won't spend time on that. What I will say, two pieces of credit for the campus here, for President Rice and their team. Very strategic in the way that they are allocating resources. It would be super easy, you know, we have been without resources, I don't know, I've been doing this for 30 years, I've never been in a window where we actually had resources. So it would be super easy in a case like this to just go on a wild spending spree, and let's add some staff, and let's do all kinds of crazy things. But they're very planned in the way that they've approached this. You see a $471,000 transfer into reserves, so we're not taking money out, we're putting money back in, and that's a result of the Skyway project that we've talked about. Really positive numbers there. The president and the team have been closing out some, you know, a lot of our campuses have bookstore deficits that have been sitting on our books for years, and so the campuses really kind of putting its financial house in order, and really want to acknowledge that, and thank Ray, thank Betsy, who left earlier today, for the really great work that they've been doing for the last couple of years. Speaking of really great work, USM are really knocking it out of the park with this forecast. So we originally had budgeted about an $80,000 surplus here. We've been right at budget for the last two forecasts, and USM pops in this time with about a $4 million change, or excuse me, about a $2.5 million change to that forecast. The forecast or the reason for the change is mostly in attrition, and it is everywhere. I mean, it's not that they've, you know, said, "We're not going to do any hires here." If you look at the 2.4, it literally is a collection of small buckets all across the university system, and they've done a really excellent job of controlling expenses. We've talked about that a couple of times, the really nice work that Justin has done there. So kudos to the campus there, and really setting themselves up for hopefully a strong 2026 as well. Maine Law, I feel like I've done three or four of these forecasts. I'm excited that the budget I'm going to show you in a little bit looks exactly like this, nothing but lines across it, which is exactly what we want to see, that we're on track to the budget that we produced at the beginning of the year. So kudos to the dean and Nicole and the team at Maine Law. Lots of numbers and brackets going on in the system buckets. That's governance, university services allocated, and university services unallocated. So despite all of those brackets and ugly-looking numbers, let me just tell you, everything there is going on exactly as we thought it would. So governance is running just a little bit ahead, about $100,000, and we're hopeful that we'll end up in that spot, and it just means it'll be $100,000 that we don't have to assess next year and can pass that savings on. University services allocated is in a negative situation because what that reflects is the bargaining agreements. Part of the bargaining agreements included $1,000 payments as kind of signing bonuses for several of those agreements, and we covered that with your authority and your permission. We covered that at the system level, and so the money was coming out of that university services allocated and going back out to the campuses. And then it's offset, if you go over into the reserve column, the $3.2 million transfer there. Those are the funds that we had, we had shown you how we were going to pay for the $1,000. And then same, excuse me, same down in the next line, university services unallocated. This one is actually going in the other direction. These are positive balances. It's not that we all of a sudden have a bunch of new money, it's really commitments that you have made where we haven't necessarily spent all of the dollars yet. So adult degree completion is one, it makes up a decent amount of those dollars right there, even though we know we've allocated those out. And there's a couple of other buckets in there as well. Finally, what you'll see at the bottom is unrestricted investment income, which I just reported on, and you see the $7.2 million variation right there. So for this forecast, collectively, we're up about $3 million. We'd be up by as much as $5.5 million, if not we're standing that $1,000 payment piece that we made. So really strong forecast, and hopefully setting us up well as we roll into 2026. Any questions on that before I move on to the budget?
Questions? Looks like we're ready for the budget.
Okay, super. So typically, when I get to the May part of the budget presentation, I do not go through the full-blown presentation over an hour, so you're all excited about that, I'm sure. But I will hit, I will hit the highlights, and I am going to walk through the presentation and kind of hit one or two points on all of the slides because I do think that they are really important. But like the chair, I do want to thank the presidents, I want to thank the CBOs. This is a long work, this is a lot of process. Really want to thank the campus community, the faculty, the staff, the students that consistently show up, give us feedback on these budgets. I'm a firm believer that we end up with a better product, the more people that participate in that exercise in our campuses do a really great job of engaging. So let me talk about kind of the process of, do I have the controller desk? Is that what this is? Oh, excellent. So let's talk a little bit about kind of process. So we developed assumptions in the fall with the chief business officers. We introduced drafts of budgets to the campuses, or the campuses developed those drafts in the fall and the early winter, submitted those to us in the system office in the spring. We had a full day of budget meetings with the FFT committee, meeting with the FFT committee in March. So if you really want to get into that detail that I'm not going to cover today, eight hours of really good budget presentations, take advantage of that. You know, going to YouTube, you don't have to listen to eight hours, you can scroll right down to Presque Isle, you can scroll right down to the campus that you're interested in. All of that information is out there, really good presentations, really strongly encourage you to take advantage of that if you have it. And we also had a April, mid-April work session at FFT. That material is also online, where we went into a little deeper dive into some of the questionnaires. We talked a little bit more about system, system office, shared services, all of those kind of pieces. And then a really strong vote from our FFT committee at the end of last month. So again, really excited to be here and to talk about this at a high level. So we roll on to some of the budget pressures. You know, for us, I've consistently talked the last couple of years since COVID about residence hall occupancy challenges that we have there. Some of it is related to COVID, some of it is related to the condition of our facilities. Certainly, we emphasized that when we talked about Gordian and the challenge especially of our residence hall facilities. Thanks to the great work of Sam and others, and the great support we got from the governor and the legislature, we were in the process of making substantial investments. You've seen that at Farmington, where we've had dorms down, we've got new ones coming back on. Really excited about where we're going, but we still have those challenges. And we see the benefits of when we make upgrades in Portland and other places. So that continues to be a challenge. The other one I'll mention is the most obvious one, which is the challenge we're having with state appropriation and the uncertainty that that creates in this budget. We've had uncertainty before, we've passed budgets, and the state hasn't passed a budget until even after July in some cases. So there's, our schedules don't line up perfect, but it's a little different, and so we certainly want to acknowledge that and acknowledge, you know, we're having lots of conversations in Augusta, we're making them aware of the impact that the budget has on our budget, but that continues to be something that we're watching, obviously, very closely. Budget assumptions, you know, fairly straightforward here. We, in-state tuition, we set at 3%. Oops, you're going to see that in here, plus or minus a tenth of a percent based on rounding. Compensation assumptions are generally consistent with bargaining agreements that are in place. And then, as we always do, we allow campuses the flexibility within the work that Jeff's team does around enrollment. We allow the campuses to submit individual out-of-state tuition rates, just again because the markets of our campuses are so different. FY26 budget overview, again, not going to spend a ton of time here. What you're going to see in the slides ahead is that, you know, budgeted credit hours are up 1.6% over last year, that's really strong, 3.6% over FY24. And then, you know, again, the 9.58 million in the governor's budget and the impact of that, as well as the $4 million associated with the paid family medical leave piece. As we've been reiterating to everyone that will listen to us in Augusta, if you give us the 4% and then you don't give us the paid leave piece, it's just like a 2% increase. It's just like a 50% cut, is how we'll refer to it. So this is the table that, again, same kind of format that you saw when I was doing the budget forecast, so won't spend a lot of time here, you can see how it's flowing out. What you see at UMA, Fort Kent, USM, you can see balanced budgets there with a mix between the auxiliary and the E and G side. So certainly happy to see balanced budgets there. Up at UMaine, again, you see that transition to a balanced budget, $2.1 million E and G. So I think I said three years when I was talking about 25. This is actually the third one in 26 of the president's plan. So you see that final, that final projected $2.1 million campus reserve transfer. Everything else is balanced. We are projecting, as you can see here, a surplus at Presque Isle. Want to pause with Farmington and just note, when we presented the budget to you originally, when we presented it to FFT, we've not figured out Farmington yet. We're still, we're still working on that with the president and the team there. We are seeing really positive numbers. You heard Jeff talk about really good numbers there the first time. I've heard numbers like that since maybe I worked there 20 years ago, it feels like. So really good progress there, but we know we've got more work to do. And so the commitment that we mentioned to FFT, the commitment that I'm going to mention right here, live on YouTube, so you can hold me to it, is that we will present a balanced Farmington budget in October. So the process that we typically follow is, you know, we ask you to pass this budget. We like to think that we're going to be as good as UMaine in predicting the credit hours, but that's not the way it typically works. Even if we nail those students, we might get more out-of-state or less out-of, you know, the mix ends up being different. So we always have to make adjustments, and we do that in the October timeframe. And so maybe the adjustment will be a little bit bigger than we typically would do, maybe enrollment will materialize like we think, and it won't be as much. But either way, you will get a balanced Farmington budget in October. Rolling through, so there is a substantial amount of attrition built into this budget. We talked a little bit about the USM example, and we were talking about the forecast, but the reality is, if you're not as familiar with attrition, we've been doing this for a while, we did this in state government, this is just largely, not always, but it's largely just the time that it takes when someone leaves to rehire. You accumulate dollars in that window, and so this is just trying to recognize those in advance. If you consistently have a million dollars of savings at the end of the year from salaries, what this, what these kind of initiatives do is they pull that forward so that you don't have to make an extra $1 million of cuts when you know you're going to have a million dollars at the end. Now, sometimes that means you need to manage that, and so if you're trending, you know, my example, you're trending towards $800,000, then maybe you need to be a little bit more aggressive so that you achieve that million. If you're doing like, you know, like in the USM example where you're exceeding it, then maybe you back off that a little bit. But attrition is something that we've been using for about a decade now. You know, you'd love it in a perfect world if you had all the resources you had, and that would be a nice little bonus for you at the end of the year, but it's a better alternative than some of the reductions. Then you could imagine if I was up here presenting another $9.73 million of reductions, how challenging that might be. So a good tool, anyway. Budget stabilization fund, just really wanted to show you a snapshot here. We've had a budget stabilization fund since 2010. It was as high as $21.5 million about three years ago. It was as low as $4.5 million just a couple months ago. And so we, this is not, this is not the size of a budget stabilization fund you want for a $688 million enterprise, and so we need to, we need to make a concerted effort to build back up our reserves, to give us that kind of flexibility, not just for challenging budget situations, but for critical investments that we need to make to grow the system. E and G state appropriation, really strong, assuming FY26 plays out like we hope. Really, this is my slide just to acknowledge the great work that really Sam has been doing in Augusta and all of us here. $53, $56 million worth of increases since FY20 in a variety of areas, and so really appreciative of this governor and the support, and as well as this legislature for the support they've provided for us over the last six years. Always have trustees that have asked questions, especially when we were in the, you know, 2020, 2021 range, when we had really high inflation. How does the appropriation stand compared to CPI? And so we started tracking that a number of years ago. It's been as high, the gap, you can see there, the gap has been as high as $41 million in 2022. It's starting to close a little bit because of the increased appropriation we've had, again, in the last couple of years, and, you know, this is assuming we get that 4% increase, and so we're hoping we don't have to adjust this chart. Maine Economic Improvement Fund is also a significant portion of this budget, about $22 million of support split out, again, between the two large institutions, and then we do a small campus initiative that we've been doing for a number of years, and Jason Charland and the team at the University of Maine run that, and certainly thankful for that, for that great work that they do there. You can see categories here, and happy to divert any questions to Joan, if anyone has any in this space. Talk a little bit about enrollment. You heard Jeff talking about 2025, so this is kind of where we're building to. Really strong numbers, you know, 3.6% over FY25's budget. I mentioned this at FFT a couple of times, but, you know, I can remember, some of you probably can, you used to be able to ski off these slopes. I mean, it was straight, it was straight down. And so just seeing, you know, the out-of-state number is really strong, especially that in-state one. The in-state one is one that we've been, especially, has been going down for a number of years. So this is just a great chart, I love this chart. Early college credits, we see generally stabilizing, which is what you would expect. We've got stable funding there, so we expect the enrollment to generally stabilize across there. And then your paid subscriptions, you see the growth there. We did, we did switch over a couple of years ago from, we were trying to do that in credit hours, and it just became really complicated and stuff, and so we've shifted that over to subscriptions. Last handful of slides here, so residence hall occupancy, 93% as a system, about where we were last year. You know, this is one where, if you really want to understand the story of residence hall occupancy, go back to the appendix and then look at it campus by campus, because it's a different story everywhere, everywhere you are. Some places... Some places where we're oversubscribed and we're well over 100% and other places, if you're looking for a room, give us a ring. FY '26 recommended tuition rates, again, consistent with what I mentioned earlier in the presentation. These are generally in the 3% range, especially for in-state students. Out-of-state, little bit more flexibility, but generally, again, we're in that 3%, 3.5% range. And you see the same over on the graduate and out-of-state side. We also, the last couple of years, we've started to include special and differential tuition rates. And so these are the places where we charge differential tuition. You can largely see from some of the programs, they tend to be places where the, the programming is a little bit more expensive. So engineering, nursing, business programs, things like that. We've always had approval process for this. It's not something that we had typically included in the presentation, but felt like it was really kind of completing the picture in full transparency. And so we've started to add this in the last couple of years. Mandatory fees, so fees are part of what we also ask you to approve. And so you'll see student activity fees, these are mandatory fees. I'll note in just a couple of cases here, there's a couple of cases where we have some non-mandatory fees that are going away and they're being replaced by a mandatory fee. So it creates some really weird examples like the, like the UMA one here where it looks like there's a $570 fee, but there's a non-mandatory fee over somewhere else that is, is going away. So they tend to level out. So always encourage people to dig down and understand these just a little bit more. Here is room and board rates for FY '26. What I want to mention about this one, which has been our case for 15 or years or so, but it's never really been an issue, is the bullet up, or the point up in the top left was, the rates that we are showing you here reflect the rates that the most students on a campus are in. And so it's never been an issue because most of the time, the, the most common rate is the single or the double, you know, the traditional rate and so on. But it's a little different, now that UMA has joined our group for this slide, it's a little different there because the average room at UMA is not that, like it is at other campuses. It's not a, you know, two, two beds and, you know, the shared bathroom down the hallway and all of that. And so when you look at the UMA room rate here and you say $8,000, how can, you know, how can it be twice as much as it is at, at a place like Machias or something? Well, it's again, because in this case, the typical room tends to be a single. It's, it's, it's more adult focused. It's got a, you know, so that's why you see that kind of differential in the rates here. And so I wanted to show that one because it does stand out. We got some questions about that one at another meeting. Annual comprehensive student charges, so this is just wraps it all together. So what, what do we look like with tuition, the mandatory fees, the room and board, the whole ball of wax? Again, you see, generally, we're in that 3.5% range. Here's the 5% annual change in, in tuition when adjusted for inflation. So you can see, this is a national trend that, that systems and campuses and states are losing ground on tuition to inflation. I, again, I mentioned this at, at FFT. The first time we did this chart, we were the only institution that was in the bottom. And I looked at it just before this, I looked at the 2019 version and there were two states that were at the bottom. And now we've got to the point where every, I think other states have just recognized what our trustees recognized a long time ago, which is you can't increase tuition 8% every single year. And that's, that's what a lot of institutions do and it's what we did in the 1990s and early 2000s. Always want to, always, we know we have, we know we have low tuition, but we always want to measure that against incomes. We, we have a lot of wealthy neighbors that are peers of ours. And so this is always a check that we want to do against ourselves. How are, how does our tuition look compared to per capita income? And maybe trustee Alexander asked about household income, which was a great suggestion. And so we added that one in a couple of years ago as well. And so this is a chart that we'll continue to track as we roll forward. Funding depreciation, this is the next three slides I was going to whip through really quickly. Total investment system-wide is up about 3.2 million. So again, when, when the chancellor came in, talked about diversifying our, our strategy for how we address deferred maintenance, one of those parts of the strategy was an internal look. We weren't, we weren't budgeting enough internally. We were relying too much on state government to solve all of our problems for us. And so we've gone to a more diversified approach and you see that reflected here with the increase. Because we are spending a lot of money, we're putting up a lot of buildings, our depreciation expense is actually going up by more than our investment is. And so we're actually losing a little bit of ground on the amount of total depreciation expense that we are covering. But in general, it's a, it's a, it's a positive, it's a positive story here. Capital investments, you can see here, I won't, I won't, I won't roll through those and capital plans. What I'll remind you though about these is if you're, you know, we used to, we used to spend the July meeting talking about those one-year capital plans. What we decided, rather than bore you for, for hours and hours, is we rolled those into regular FFT meetings now. So the last FFT meeting, we ended up cutting them because we ran out of time, but USM was going to be there to talk about their capital plan, so they'll be on the next one. And so we do those at, at regular meetings just to let you take a deep dive, but not try to jam it in, you know, the two minutes before I hit move to the next slide. So much more detail about these ones in the next couple of FFT meetings. And then these are my last slides, which is the actual budget itself. And so E and G here, I'm just going to, we've talked about the lines for quite some time and I won't go through all of them, just hit a couple of highlights here. The big one is the, you know, the pie chart on the top left, which is the percentage that's covered by our students versus state appropriation. It's a, it's a little bit, it's a little different when you, when you combine E and G and auxiliary. But what you see in both cases is that the students pay a higher percentage than we get from state appropriation. And even in that example, we're assuming we're going to get a $9.5 million appropriation in FY '26. If that doesn't materialize, you know, that's probably 48, 42 maybe, or it looks completely different. And so we'd like, you know, we're happy with the progress that we're making in Augusta, but it's important that we continue that, continue looking to kind of shift that, that, that focus. E and G budget has hovered between 70 and 73 or 74% of that has been compensation for the last decade or so. It's not surprising. It presents challenges. I mean, every time we do a bargaining contract, typically a bargaining contract might be 20 million in new resources. And if we get, if we get 10 million from a tuition increase and we get 10 million from state government, those are going to wash. And that means we start off, we, maybe we start off balanced if enrollment stays the same, but we can't do anything new. And so we do always kind of have those, those kind of wage pressures, and I talked about that a little bit earlier. Here's the auxiliary budget. Big change in the auxiliary budget, the numbers generally look the same. What has changed is the shift in non-compensation and compensation. If you go back several years ago, that looks dramatically different, mostly because, or not mostly, almost exclusively because we transitioned the UMaine dining over to Sodexo. And so those employees moved from being in our compensation bucket to more of a, a service arrangement. And so that significantly changed that, that pie chart. And then here's again, overall system budget, $688 million budget, roughly even state appropriation and tuition. And again, you see the overall compensation. And then my last slide is a requirement that we do every year. This is always my last slide, which is, we're required to report to the board annually on travels, meals, entertainments, how much we spend on memberships, gifts, donations, and sponsorships. So this just rolls all of those up. All of those were in the individual budgets that you've seen over the last couple of months and we've talked about the travel. But because of this legislative requirement resulting from some things a couple of decades ago, we report annually on this to you. And I believe that is my last slide. Yep. So lots of detail in the appendix. If you haven't had a chance to look at that, really good information on, you know, individual occupancy rates of the campuses, individual enrollment, see the campus individual budgets. But I'm happy to stop right there and, and answer any questions.
A tour de force. Thank you. And of course, this, this presentation reflects hours, weeks, months of work, both by the team and by FFT. So, but now is the time for the full board to ask any questions or get any clarification. Can you take?
Can we drop the slide so we can see the other board members?
Yeah. Let's, question, and I recognize that for some, this is a new activity, so please make sure, it's important work, so we want to make sure all our questions are addressed. Trustee Kane.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. I just wanted to say upfront, thank you for your hard work. That I think the FFT committee has done a very thorough job digging into all of these pieces over our last several meetings and appreciate the presidents as well with all of their detailed answers to our questions along the way. I think my question is one, I actually know the answer to, but I want you to talk about it a little bit more, which is navigating the next few months as we watch the legislature close. To me, this is business as usual, right? It's often that the legislature finishes their budget after we do. And we may have to make some adjustments, certainly looking back in the last five years, we've had to do that just in the pandemic environment. But can you just talk about how you're thinking about it and what you're watching for and what we should expect from a communication perspective? Thank you.
Yeah. So I think it's, it's general, you know, with, with exception, I'm going to mention is generally the same thing that we always do. So you're right, we, we're always in this kind of position generally where, where we pass a budget and we're still waiting for the states. Usually we've got a little bit more assurance now and so the sides have come together and the 4% is in, but it's not been finalized yet. And that's not the case that we're in now and it's, it is dramatically different. And so, you know, we've upped the normal great work that Sam does, and I think I mentioned yesterday that had the privilege of joining the chair in Augusta on a couple of occasions. And so, you know, we're doing the regular work that Sam does all the time, but then we're upping it a little bit just to make sure we remind everyone about the impact of the 4%, that we remind them about the paid family leave piece and the situation that we're in and the timing. And so just a little bit more of those kind of conversations than we might have had in the past. And certainly making them aware of the consequences, the potential consequences if they, if they take a pass.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's an iffy time. Trustee Alexander.
Thank you. I really appreciate the acknowledgement of the potential risks with regard to the state funding piece, which is one that we know how that works, we know when we're going to know, and we're going to have to make changes or not depending on the result. But I'm very concerned that there really isn't any acknowledgement here of the risks involved in the federal part of this process that we may not know the answer to for quite a few months and that will have both direct and indirect implications for our enrollment because of the financial situation in which many families may face, in which we may see economic impacts from various decisions at the federal level. And then the whole issue of funding through Pell Grants, grants, NIH, NSF, or whatever. So what I'm assuming is that our evaluation of this budget and any information we may have that would help us understand that the impact of those things is also going to have to happen with our October discussions. And some of those things may not take effect for another year, but it certainly might impact how much we want to spend this year, knowing some pretty bad things might be happening the following year. So I just, I'm concerned about the lack of, of a slide, of a formal recognition of those issues. Can you comment on that, please?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I could have put a slide together, but I mean, I, that's my life. Every day we wake up and we talk about the changing situation. You know, I could paint a much dire picture of how the budget could go sideways for us in Augusta just by looking at, you know, I hear, I hear people in Washington talk about the, you know, getting rid of tax and match. I know what the impact of that is on the state budget from a prior life of mine and it is substantial. And, you know, I can imagine if state government was in that position and it had to make really difficult reductions, that we might be on the table. Some of you know, we've, state government has had to do that before when I was there and the university ended up on the table. So we, we may end up in that situation. We may make the best case we can and Sam's going to make the best arguments we can. There may be nothing that we can do to avoid that. But I can assure you, we are thinking about it every day. We are planning for it every day. We're having conversations about it in the hallways. And yeah, I expect it's going to be a pretty rocky ride for this budget and, and, you know, certainly when the president's budget comes out and we're reacting to that.
Thank you. My major concern is not that you would know now, which we all know we don't know. No one can predict what's going to happen here. But just having your acknowledgement that this is another significant risk we are facing has to inform the public and the Maine Legislature about changes and nasty decisions that may have to be made. If the revenues don't flow in from Pell Grants, if the revenues don't flow in because a whole bunch of kids and young adults can't afford to come to college due to the lack of other support systems in their lives that currently exist, these things just need to be publicly acknowledged as something that cannot allow us to be complacent about what's in this budget at this time. Thank you.
100% agree with everything that you said there. Fortunately, if you, if you, if you give me a favor, we'll vote on this budget. I know Sam's got a press release queued up that makes all of those great points for us. And so fingers crossed.
Trustee McMahon.
I just wanted to point out some of the good work that Ryan didn't mention. We did a deep dive in FFT on energy costs. And just so people are aware, in fiscal '24, the system energy costs were 32.4 million. Fiscal '25, 27.7. Fiscal '26, 27.9. So our budgeted energy costs this year are 4.5, 4.6 million, less than they were two years ago. And if that isn't good work and prudent management on behalf of management, I don't know what is.
Excellent point. Excellent point. And I think it's fair to say to trustee Alexander that this issue of potential impact was a big part of the discussion that we had, Chair Katz and I had with the presidents in the first, very first round of these reviews. And it's top, it's, it's taught most on the minds of all the presidents. And I think you can't, you don't know how to react to something that hasn't happened yet, but the thinking, I think I'm, I'm really very confident that everybody has this obviously on their front burner. And some accommodation has been made in this budget at the University of Maine to, to reflect some of the changes that have already occurred. So I, I, I agree that this is front and center and we'll keep an eye. Trustee Hesse.
Question for you, Ryan. Is there anything that's not in this budget as far as driving future growth, not sort of looking at this specific year, but potential upside on revenue that we should be thinking about and investing in to cover any sort of future projected shortfalls?
Yeah. And so, yeah, so let me try to answer that one. You know, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to hopefully, you know, the budget in general tends to be a little more status quo when we're trying to move, especially at the system piece, you know, we're, you know, we're not starting off developing the system budget thinking, what are the more services we can provide? It's really, how can we be as efficient as we can to pass off the fewest costs so that we maximize the appropriation that's going out? But, you know, if we end up in a, you know, if we end up in a favorable investment position, for instance, you know, last year we ended up in a strong position and so we came back to you and said, here's a little piece that we'd like to put into reserves, but we really want to make some investments to do the things that you're talking about that we couldn't envision in the budget. And so we'd like to take 3 million and plow it into your pace to grow that. And so I'm hoping that, you know, we'll, we'll end up with some gains and we'll be able to come back and chancellor will be able to give you an investment plan that will, that will do those next steps. But, you know, I, I don't know that I'd say I see all of those in here, you know, to that level, the big, kind of something that could really game change. It's, it's, we tend to do those as one-offs. And I say that at the system level. The campuses are doing all kinds of great things, but just from a system perspective.
Other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, we're ready for the resolution that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the FFT and approves the 2026 updated proposed University of Maine system operating and capital budget and recommended student changes. Moved by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Martin. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? Trustee?
Trustee Eames?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. And we know we'll keep visiting this. Lunch is being prepared, so let's crank through some of these other important items. Tab 17 is the disposition of the Osiphe Trail property. President Edmondson.
Yes, thank you. I think this is pretty straightforward. We have a parcel of land at 175 Osiphe Trail in Gorham, Maine. We do not have plans for this land. It's not adjacent to our campus, and we would like the approval to sell.
Thank you. Any questions for President Edmondson? Seeing none, that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the FFT and authorizes the U.S. University of Maine System acting through the University of Southern Maine to sell an approximate one-acre parcel of land in Gorham, Maine, and offer right of first refusal to the current owners of the building that is on the parcel of land. All final terms and conditions of the sale are subject to review and approval of the University of Maine System Treasurer and General Counsel. Motion, Trustee Kane, seconded by Trustee Martin. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Trustee Eames? Oops, she dropped off. Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. And then tab 18 is the establishment of the Spofford Harris Kimball Chair in Mathematics, President Frini Mundy.
Thank you, Chair Riley. The University of Maine requests authorization for the University of Maine to establish the Spofford Harris Kimball Chair in Mathematics. These funds are now available and are endowed through an anonymous donation, and Spofford Harris Kimball was a very distinguished Chair of the Mathematics Department himself.
Any questions? Moved by Trustee Kane, seconded by Trustee Martin. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions?
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Still at the University of Maine, the establishment of pioneering innovation Chair in Engineering.
Thank you. We request authorization of the Board to establish this pioneering innovation Chair in Engineering, also the result of the same anonymous donation that has now reached the endowment level needed to establish a chair. We see this as an incredible opportunity for our university. Actually, both chairs will move us into new interdisciplinary work.
That's great. Questions? Seeing none, that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the FFT and authorizes the University of Maine System acting through the University of Maine to establish the pioneering innovation Chair in Engineering, moved by Trustee Kane, seconded by Trustee Martin. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstention?
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And maybe appropriate to take just a minute to thank the kinds of people who give these kinds of donations for these important initiatives and don't even want to be known for it. Very, very impressive. Tab 20, establishment of the Dr. Bernard Lounh, Honors College Teaching Professorship.
Thank you. University of Maine requests authorization to establish the Bernard Lounh, Dr. Bernard Lounh, Class of 42 Honors College Teaching Professorship. Again, this fund has now met the minimum endowment value, Dr. Lounh, an incredibly distinguished alumnus of the University of Maine, Class of 42. He came as an immigrant from Lithuania at age 14, an unbelievable humanitarian who established the first effective cardiac defibrillator, was a winner of the Nobel Prize, and so much more. And the honors program will benefit greatly, and he was an extremely strong advocate for the honors program.
He certainly was. A Nobel winner from the University of Maine.
Yep.
Amazing. Chair?
You can read the resolution, right?
Yeah, oh yeah. Thank you. I will read this text. That the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the FFT and authorizes the University of Maine System acting through the University of Maine to establish the Dr. Bernard Lounh, 42 Honors College Teaching Professorship, moved by Trustee Kane, seconded by Trustee Martin. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions?
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. At tab 21 is the athletic multipurpose arena funding increase for the University of Maine.
Thank you, trustee. As we all know, the University of Maine is very grateful to the Harold Alphonde Foundation for the extraordinary investment that they have made for a multi-year set of investments in Humane Athletics. And this resolution requests your authorization to expend up to $30 million for the completion of the design, site work preparation, relocation of existing utilities, and the early bid packages for the athletic multipurpose arena, which is one of the anchor centerpiece buildings for the athletic capital plan.
Any questions? Seeing none, the resolution is that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of FFT and authorizes the University of Maine System acting through the University of Maine to expend up to $30 million for the completion of design, site work preparation, relocation of existing utilities, and early bid packages for the athletic multipurpose arena, moved by Trustee Kane, seconded by Trustee Martin. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions?
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And tab 22 in your book, the athletic utility field building. Again, you may.
Also, part of the same athletic capital plan and renovation project, this is a request to you to authorize us to construct an approximately 3,000-square-foot athletic utility field building as a part of the overall shifts that we're making in athletics. And part of the reason for this is that existing equipment is currently stored underneath the football fields, bleachers, and is subject to weathering, possible vandalism, and even theft. So this will be a storage facility for equipment.
Any questions? That the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the FFT and authorizes the University of Maine System acting through the University of Maine, the construction of the new approximately 3,000-square-foot athletic utility field building, moved by Trustee Kane, seconded by Trustee Martin. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions?
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. And tab 23, another area where federal cuts might impact us on childcare subsidies, I suppose. But 23, Black Bear Academy childcare expansion.
Thank you. And this request to you, not part of athletics, but a very important part of our university activity. It's a request for you to authorize that we expend up to $4 million in renovations of existing facilities located at University Park in Old Town for childcare. This comes as a result of an award, a congressionally-directed spending award secured in 2024 with the great leadership of Senator Susan Collins. And this will allow us to expand the number of students that we can serve in the university-based, campus-based childcare by at least 41 slots. So we're hopeful to be able to do this.
Great. Questions? Comments? Seeing none, that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the FFT and authorizes the University of Maine acting through the University of Maine, the University of Maine System acting through the University of Maine to expend up to $4 million in renovations of existing facilities located at University Park in Old Town, moved by Trustee Kane, seconded by Trustee Martin. Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. They're not quite ready for lunch. I don't want to give short shrift to the VCRI report, but we would like to do it before lunch. You just, some very happy people just, you sure?
Yep.
Okay.
And we should have a slide deck for this someplace. Thank you. I can be quite brief, and this is a part of the reporting expectation for those of us who are working on and have responsibility for implementation of the University of Maine System strategic plan, because the research components are being reported directly to the full board. And so this will be a first report to you, a partial report, that will focus on where we have been putting energy. And I'll just remind you what I'm going to do, and I'll do it quickly. And you have slides that give you more detail if you would like to. So first, the research actions of the strategic plan. There are five research actions, 15 research goals, all of which have different metrics and different reporting outcomes that are included. And today, we're going to focus on Research Action 1 to give you an update. Within Research Action 1, there are three goals, and here they are. So actually, I'm going to back up. One important piece of Research Action 1 is a plan to be developed in '23, '24. And I do want to tell you that work on that development has been going on, is underway, and we have a draft of a plan at this point. The world is changing around us quite a bit, and so that's a little bit of an evolving situation. Anyhow, three goals, I'll just give you rather brief updates on where we are with all of them. But in the first goal, I wanted to particularly point out that we're very focused on enhancing research capacity and external funding competitiveness. And here are the ways in which the strategic plan laid out the process for doing that. So that's an important piece of where we spend quite a lot of time. The second goal about growing external funding from multiple sources is shifting a little bit in its shape, but the work still continues. And goal, the third one that we listed here, has to do with student access to engage in research across the system. There are six goals, actually, underneath this action, but I'm focusing today just on these three. So on the first then, which we already just talked about, access to research infrastructure, which is something that we determined is really important system-wide if we're going to be a good supporter of research system-wide. And I believe maybe some of this was already mentioned by President Kushner in her early remarks today. But MEIF small campus initiative projects are a very important part of building capacity. That's where we provide what could be thought of as seed funding through the MEIF funds that Ryan mentioned in his report. And I will give credit to Jason Sharland, who works with us on this programmatic activity for the system. So we invite proposals from across the system, from researchers who have an idea that they're interested in that needs to align with one of the statewide MEIF technology sectors. There are seven of those, and here are a few of them listed here. And these are the awards that were made in fiscal year '25. Couple that I wanted to single out, the second one, the Smart Manufacturing Award at UMA, very timely currently with administration priorities at the federal level. If we are able to be a really strong collaborator in smart manufacturing and cybersecurity, that will be potentially a place where future funding will be available federally. And then just to align with the very good discussion we had a little bit earlier about the new degree at Humane Fort Kent, number seven speaks to building collaborative wood quality research capacity with Humane Fort Kent. So we have faculty at these, at all of our universities in the Small Campus Initiative now coming in with ideas. And that's been, that's grown over the years. We used to not get as much diversity of ideas as we are getting here. So this is about enhancing capacity and the kinds of metrics we can report on. You can imagine they have to do with the numbers of awards, the numbers of dollars, and then ultimately success in achieving other funding sources. Another piece of capacity has to do with making sure that what a university like Humane, a research university, has to have in place, making sure that as much of that as possible is extended to the other universities in our system as needed. And so we do have a memo that went out last year to go from our, I guess it went from me, and also our Vice President for Research. But where we wanted to make clear to the other campuses, there's a lot at the University of Maine. We're inviting you to participate in it as you wish, and that is happening. And again, we can report details. But I did want to focus on the first two right now. Research, administration, and compliance are so relevant right now in our work with the federal changes. And therefore, reiterate again how wonderful it is that colleagues across the system are engaging with the Humane experts and bringing their own experts into those discussions. Because without more capacity, it will be hard to grow research system-wide. So I mentioned that I was only going to speak a little bit about each of these three goals. The second one, growing external funding, that's been a goal now in the strategic plan since we've had it. And right now, as I say, the landscape is changing, but we think it's pretty important to think of the funding landscape as including all three parts here. The federal opportunities, of course, as they change, the state, which has been a generous funder in so many ways for R&amp;D, including the MEIF, and then newly developing philanthropy and corporate sector funding for R&amp;D that can be equally critical for us. And we have pieces of that across the system, and we're looking to strategically grow that. And then the last goal that I wanted to mention, annually document the expansion of student access to engage in research. And there, we're very fortunate to have the Harold Alphonde Foundation-funded UMS Transforms Project. The student success and retention piece of that project includes the research learning experiences, and the growth has been fantastic across the system. So this past academic year, 100-plus sections of RLEs, Research Learning Experience courses across the entire system with more than 2,000 students involved. And as you'll remember, the goal, the ambitious goal of the Alphonde Project was that by the end of the time of the Alphonde Project, there are opportunities for every student in the system. So this is a very important strategic approach to engaging students in research, development, innovation, creative activity in an authentic way right away in their first year. It's an attempt to, of course, improve retention, but also to help students get engaged and be even more ready when they leave us to enter the workforce in a variety of ways. So I wanted you to have a flavor of what we're working on. All of these pieces are needed to develop a meaningful strategic plan for R&amp;D that is system-wide, which we're formulating as an update to the plan that was produced in 2019. The group doing this hard work is here. I want to thank the Research Leaders Group. We convene about quarterly and have a lot of in-between work, have been working this year on finalizing a draft of this strategic research plan, even in the changing circumstances right now. So as you can see, wonderful range of expertise and knowledge, and I'm so pleased to be able to meet with these folks regularly and with, again, Jason's good stewardship of all of this. So some themes are emerging that you'll see in this draft research and development plan, and here they are. But I would like to add a couple of other features that we're seeing. There's a lot of interest system-wide in community-engaged research, which is a different, perhaps different sort of model than the type we talk about a lot here in this group, which tends to be investigator-driven, discovery-based research in a laboratory setting. I mean, that feels most familiar to most people. But community-engaged research is happening a lot across our system, and it involves partnerships with community members who help to formulate the problems and then work together with faculty and students and staff to solve them. Another type of research, I guess I would call course-based research, that is to say, research that happens within courses that exist at the undergraduate level. And in many places with a strong teaching mission, the course-based research is the way that faculty can actually continue to do some scholarship, and they do it by engaging their undergraduate students as partners with them. And I'm very interested in seeing us grow both of those kinds of areas across the system, because they're well-suited to our universities and to their particular missions. Looking to the future, these areas have been of interest across our system in a variety of ways. And I think we see opportunities, let's see, for example, with education and learning, to actually do research on our own work. We heard these presentations about CBE. There's a lot of assessment goes on, and those can become areas of scholarly focus. A strong focus on applied sciences and engineering, forestry, as we grow, programmatic activity could be a good example. But I also wanted to mention that we're tracking very closely on and having a lot of conversations beginning at Humane, but more broadly, about the research priorities that are being publicized by the current administration, which include AI, quantum and information sciences, nuclear technologies, and national security features of many different types. And so, looking at the ways in which some of our researchers who have interests across these areas can begin to connect with funding is going to be a big priority for us going forward. So the next update will actually include the draft plan for your review, and I'm happy to take any questions or to let you go right to lunch.
Questions? And let's take the slides down in case we have questions. RLE is so, I hope we get to have an opportunity at some future meeting to hear from students and faculty again engaged in that. That was a positive. That's, the Alphonde money still runs for a while, but I assume a part of that is to try to figure out how to make this a permanent feature.
Well, of course, the idea is it improves retention.
Yeah.
And so we start to see ways to look at future funding, but we have resources for several more years with this. And the real key, and I was actually speaking with President Edmondson about this earlier, I think the key here might be for us to have the opportunity to assemble a presentation about the different pieces of RLE, certainly to hear from students and the faculty who are involved, but to speak about the pedagogy, to speak about the actual kind of theoretical arguments behind it, and then to give very concrete examples. arguments behind it, and then to give very concrete examples. And so we're, I think, ready to have a deeper look at R L E anytime soon. There's been quite a lot of assessment work going on around R L E and a research paper published by Holly White, a University of Maine graduate student fairly recently, looking at outcomes and impact of R L E. So, so that's taking hold in a strong way.
Great. Great. Questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I know that research is a moving target, so by some miracle, we can, we can finish our agenda before lunch, which I suspect is probably a good thing to do. And Lisa, Vice Chair Eames' absence, trustee Kane will take on the consent agenda.
I just need to make sure someone told me the script.
Somebody?
The script.
The script?
Which I was going to ask for a lot of years, and then, and then it came back. So, yes, I'm very prepared.
We are well-prepared.
I'm very prepared. I just didn't have the script yet. Thank you. I move for the Board of Trustees to approve the consent agenda items, acceptance of the minutes, approval of honorary degrees, and the items as forwarded from the April 30th, 2025 Finance Facility and Technology Committee meeting. The consent agenda items are tabs 25 to 31 in the meeting materials. Could I have a second? Seconded by trustee Martin. All those in favor? Let's check online.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Mishu?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank, well done. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. This has been quite a meeting, and we know we are living in perilous times, but I think the meeting reflects the fact that this is a team that works through perilous times to keep their eye on the target of educating our students and making sure our mission is, is first and foremost, and I applaud and thank everybody for that. We know we'll be meeting frequently to keep up to date on what's going on with the budget at the state and federal level, so stay tuned. We know we have lots of work ahead of us, but we're building on real strength. And I, the June, July 14th meeting is presently scheduled at the University of Maine, pending what happens with, when we get a better sense of what's happening at the state level on our budget. We may well make that a Zoom meeting. We know it's summertime, but we'll just have to wait a little bit to see what might be on our agenda and whether we need an in-person meeting or not. So stay posted, but we'll let you know as soon as possible because I know people need to make plans. With that, unless there's anything else for the, for the good of the University of Maine's, trustee Alexander?
Just a quick question. The official board meeting calendar calls for a two-day meeting, the 14th and 15th. Are you currently projecting a one-day meeting on Monday, the 14th?
It should be a one day. We're planning a one day. I think it's, on the one-day meetings, we sometimes have trustees come in on, on Sunday for dinner, and that's why I think it was identified as the 13th and 14th.
It's not identified as 13th and 14th. It's identified as 14th and 15th.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. So what day is it? What's that, Monday?
It should be the 14th.
13th, 14th, 13th, 14th, so.
Well, you need to fix that document then. That's not what it says. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It is the 14th. That's a Monday, and we will let you know ASAP whether it's Zoom or in person. With that, anything else for the good of the University of Maine system? Thank you all for quite a meeting. Thank you again, President Rice, for your great hospitality and the wonderful meeting site, and we, I believe, have lunch. Heather, are we ready for lunch? I suspect we're all very much ready for lunch. Thank you all very much.
I presume there's no executive session following lunch?
No executive session.